I hereby call our meeting to order. Karen, can you make the motion for the consent agenda, please? That's right, pleasure allegiance, of course. How could you possibly forget that? Okay. Okay, Karen, please make our consent agenda motion.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that the board accept the, approve the minutes of June 14th business meeting, June 21st special meeting, June 26th special meeting are many minutes from September 7th retreat and the September 14th retreat. Do I have a second?
Well, I'll second that. And all in favor, please raise your hand. Yes, and we don't have Cody on, do we? Oh, Cody is on, and he's raised his hand. So that is unanimous, eight zero. Thank you very much. Next, we have staff and student recognition. So is Andy here? Oh, he's online. Okay, Andy, well, you've got two, uh, two opportunities here to talk about our great students. We have the junior innovators and we have the international Stockholm Junior Water Prize. So why don't you begin with the junior innovators and we'll go from there, Andy. Are you ready?
Okay, sure. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, my friend.
All right, can you see what's on the screen? Or I know the lighting is probably not perfect, but I got a couple of slides to. You can?
Yes, we can see it. Great.
All right, excellent. Okay, well, hi, this is Andy, uh, soon at science research and junior innovators teacher at high school. Uh, sorry I couldn't be with you guys tonight, but first I'd like to thank the Board of Ed, Chairman Kelly and Dr. Jones for the opportunity to recognize these special, uh, special students. So, uh, as you guys know, uh, last year we started the junior innovators program at, um, you know, for the middle school and oddly enough, of the same name is the Junior Innovators Challenge, which is run by Thermo Fisher Scientific. And what's important to know is that, uh, in order to apply to this competition, it's a national competition, uh, over 2,000 students are asked to apply and only 300 of the top, you know, scholars are picked. Um, in order to be nominated to apply, you have to finish in the top 10, a percent of the, of the, you know, the science fair, the Connecticut Science Fair. So we had three gals, um, you know, reach that, that level. Amelia Fall, Bridget Hayden and Lulu Wang. And so the first one, you know, two were picked as, uh, junior innovator scholars. And the first was Amelia, whose title was reducing food waste with early detection of bread mold via a colorimetric, uh, card, which use one octane, three all. So I just want to give you a quick background. Um, most of us were familiar with, uh, bread packaging when we go to the store. You know, the first thing we look at is the date, you know, and we want to make sure we're not buying something that is going to expire tomorrow. And we also want to buy something that doesn't have fungus in it. So I thought it'd be really cool to show you guys electron microscopy of what fungus looks like. So right above here in the green growth stage, that is what fungus looks like even when you can't see it. And so fungus, bread mold gives off this smell, which is like a mushroomy smell. And Amelia figured out that that smell is present in a bread bag long before you can actually see, you know, the fungus. So her idea was to create a sensor that would do two things. It would allow you to have confidence that you're buying bread that is good, even though the store says it's good. And also the bigger picture is we would use bread products long after the, uh, the, the sell by or use by date. So we're really in an effort basically to use food, you know, not waste food. And so she put together this little lighting system or this little sensor system. And what was really unique about it, I know I'm showing you a lot here, but I'll summarize. Uh, she found a dye that would basically connect with this gas that's coming off the mold. And initially that dye went from green to brighter green, which was problematic because if you walked up to a bag in a store and you see green, you don't, you really don't have a sense of where it started in terms of brightness. So she created this new two dye system where dyes are talking to one another, to put it simply. And essentially it would turn from green, from that in the end, pink to basically a white or an off white. So you would know that the, when you go to the store, hey, that bread is good. Or in your kitchen, yeah, it's, it's kind of old, but it's still good. And all these color changes, you'd be able to detect with your, with your smartphone. So the smartphone would make the decision for you. So congratulations to, to Amelia. I'd like to, if you guys, is she there? She didn't come up or, okay, so why don't we take a second for that? Congratulations, Amelia. We're so proud of you, really are. Okay. Next we have, we have Bridget Haddon, uh, another Junior Innovators Challenge scholar. And her project was demonstrating the persistence of Long Island Sound polyaromatic hydrocarbon contamination. So polyaromatics are, are everywhere. And I know that sounds cliche, but it's, these are materials that come off your tires, come off of your driveways. And so as the weather changes, all this friction and all these materials start to degrade and all of those goodies, when it rains goes into the, into the drains and eventually into, into Long Island Sound. So Bridget's idea was to really look at Todd's Point, which is opposite the, the proper coastline of Greenwich to see, all right, are these PAHs, are they persistent based on current flow, based on temperature, based on weather? So she went to about seven or, I think nine spots on Todd's Point throughout the year and collected multiple samples of water. And she found very, very interestingly that the, the PAHs did in fact flow with the currents. However, they really tended to persist in areas along Todd's Point where there was minimal flow. So in, in estuaries and places where things sort of get stuck in the water. And in addition to that, it was very dependent, as you might expect, on, on temperature. Certainly as things get warmer, things start to degrade more. And so it was really a very, very exciting project. So congratulations, Bridget. From what I understand, she's, she's online, so. Unless it's changed. Okay. I see you guys clap, but I can't hear it for some odd reason. But, uh, anyway, so finally, um, World Water Week. So you're probably wondering, what is that? And, you know, just to give you some perspective, World Water Week happened in August. And it was where 15,000 of, of the recent, you know, global researchers that study water quality, the, the need to, you know, the ways to extend water to places where potable water is very difficult. Um, so 200 countries, 15,000 participants gathered, spent a week. And during that week, they, um, actually gave out the Nobel Prize for water research. And in addition, they had the International Junior Science and you, uh, I'm sorry, the, um, Stockholm Junior Water Prize for high school research. And these were basically students that had won their way from every, each country would send basically one student. And lo and behold, Naomi Park, uh, from Greenwich High School was the winner of the US national competition and basically won the international. So I would read you her title, but I think this next slide says it all. It's basically cleaning the ocean three pollutants at a time, which is, I, I didn't make that up, but I love it, so I use it. Um, so just very quickly, these are the three problems that she addressed. There's a rising carbon dioxide in the air. That rise in the air basically is getting absorbed into the oceans, which is lowering the pH, causing all sorts of problems for marine life, including coral reefs. Um, then we have this issue of oil spills. And we've seen pictures just like that one in the center many, many times. These booms or these, these circular objects that they use to collect the oil only scratches the surface, no pun intended. All of that oil really starts to dissolve into the ocean. And really, there are no ways to clean that up until now. And then we have the Styrofoam waste, which we all kind of know about. It takes 500 years for a Styrofoam waste cup to basically degrade in our landfill. So all of these things were on Naomi's mind. And so what she did was she figured out a way to, to change that Styrofoam into this unique material that when you put it on a sponge, you could sit that stuff in the ocean and it would not only collect oil that was underwater soluble and until now basically untreatable, but it would also take out the CO2 that's, that's in that water. So you're killing three birds in one stone. You're using Styrofoam, you're taking out CO2 and you're taking out oil. And it would literally sit there. These were the tests that she ran like a buoy, just sitting underneath a buoy. And so, you know, in, in application, it would either sit on the ocean floor, you know, on top of the ocean by the shore for the less aggressive oil remediation and CO2 remediation. Or as she envisioned, you can essentially line these around these flotation boons so that not only you're collecting, you know, the, the stuff on top, but you're also getting the stuff on the bottom. So this was really, really exciting. So congratulations to Naomi. From what I understand, she's also online. An amazing, amazing job by Naomi and all three of these young ladies.
Lots of clapping, lots of clapping. So you hear it.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Hopefully I, I did, I did it justice in trying to, you know, distill it down into somewhat of an English description.
Andy, as usual, thank you very much for all you do. And thank you for recognizing these great kids.
Awesome. Thank you for the opportunity, guys. Have a great evening.
You too.
Take care.
Now we have the Emmy Ogden Mentoring Award. Uh, Mr. Hoyt, would you please come up and say a few words?
Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, Board of Education members and Greenwich community. My name is Sean Hoy. I'm the Science Program Administrator at Greenwich High School. Today, I'm honored to stand before you to celebrate an individual whose unwavering commitment to environmental stewardship has not only transformed our community, but also ignited a passion for sustainability in the hearts of many. We gather here to recognize Bob Conlin, a true champion of change as a recipient of the prestigious Emmy Ogden Mentoring Award. Bob Conlin's journey towards this accolade is marked by exceptional milestones. He has been the driving force behind countless beach cleanup initiatives, dedicating countless hours to preserving the natural beauty of our coast, of our coastal shores at Todd's Point. Through events like Live Like Luke, he has inspired us to live more consciously in harmony with the environment. Not stopping there, Bob's leadership with the Environmental Action Club at Greenwich High School has been outstanding. Under his guidance, the club has become a hub for young minds eager to tackle environmental challenges head on. He has motivated students to engage with critical ecological issues, raising awareness and sparking innovative solutions. Two of the club's most remarkable achievements have been introducing composting at Greenwich High School and being a leader in eliminating plastic, single-use bags from stores. These simple yet transformative acts, uh, acts have reduced the carbon footprint and instilled a sense of responsibility in the next generation. Bob's vision has led to the more sustainable, uh, future for our community. Bob's dedication to mentoring, guiding and nurturing young minds in their environmental endeavors is, is genuinely remarkable. He consistently meets with local community members and organizations outside of school hours to bring environmental action to the Greenwich community. He embodies the spirit of Emmy Ogden's legacy and we are proud to honor him tonight for this award. Please join me in celebrating Bob Conlin's extraordinary contributions to our community and to our planet.
Thank you, Bob. All that great work. That's fantastic. Next, Christina, would you like to take this one?
I would. Thank you, Joe. Um, I'm not going to steal Lucy Retco's thunder, but I just wanted to kind of give a special shout out to our Connecticut History Teacher of the Year Karen Boyer, who I've known for many years, who some of my children had for APUS, even though she was tough and maybe made them cry early on. But she's an amazing teacher. We're very fortunate to have her in the Greenwich schools. Um, and I call her a friend and a fellow Giants fan. So I'm sure she's going to want to get home and watch what could be a very bad game tonight. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lucy for a proper introduction.
Chairperson Kelly, Dr. Jones, Board of Education members and Greenwich community. I'm Lucy Retco, the Social Studies Program Administrator at Greenwich High School. Tonight I have the honor of introducing Karen Boyer, a social studies teacher at Greenwich High School, who is this year's recipient of the Gilder Lerman Connecticut History Teacher of the Year Award. The committee who selected Karen evaluated the following factors. A demonstrated commitment to teaching American history, including state and local history. Evidence of creativity and imagination in the classroom. And the effective use of documents, artifacts, historic sites, oral histories and other primary sources to engage students with American history. Karen has been teaching social studies for 24 years. She's a phenomenal teacher who strongly believes in the value of history education to teach students why the past is relevant to learn from today. She also sees history education as an important vehicle to teach students the critical thinking skills they will use in college, in their careers and in their daily lives. Karen's impressive knowledge and passion for American history come together in her lessons, assignments and projects. She has coached students through papers on Iran-Contra, the Whiskey Rebellion and Prince, designed oral history projects about the Vietnam War and 9/11, inspired students to excitedly dress up and role play as shakers and supported teachers in our school and across the country in their use of the Harvard Case Study Method. She also contributes to the Social Studies Department at Greenwich High School in countless ways as she has been a learning facilitator, department coach, curriculum writer and instructional leader. Her tireless efforts and innovative teaching methods have undoubtedly made a significant impact on the lives of countless students. Her ability to inspire and motivate them to reach their full potential is truly commendable. Please join me in congratulating Karen.
It's moments like that that makes our volunteer work here as board members, uh, uh, that much significant. So thank you very much, uh, people who criticize the Greenwich Public Schools. Come on, look at this. This is great. Uh, fantastic. So now my, one of my favorite parts, we're now going to the student government. It's going to be our student government, our vice president, student body vice president and student body presidents, first time making their solo speeches. So we're excited about that. So we traditionally start with the vice president. So Omar, come on up, get ready to make your speech. Make Omar feel comfortable. Come on up, Omar. I believe you're just coming off the soccer field today, right? Uh, please start out by telling us how the game went.
Entire time? Uh, suppose?
Now you don't have to touch anything.
Thank you. So it was a convincing win today. Some good news. Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones and members of the board. My name is Omar Galal. I am the Student Body Vice President at Greenwich High School. Um, and I truly can't express how grateful I am to be speaking here tonight. Exactly three weeks ago, around eight in the morning, the freshman class of 2027 entered Greenwich High School for the first time, ready to embark on an academic journey. A few hours earlier, Caleb, Ishi, the rest of the senior, uh, and I and the, but joined by the rest of the senior class, were at Todd's Point to watch the senior sunrise. We looked out over the horizon to a new dawn. If you walk around GHS today, you will understand why I make reference to new beginnings. Much like us students, Greenwich High School is taking on new beginnings of its own. The new student center, the new entryway, the new digital IDs, the new athletic fields in the back. In the long term, I have no doubts that these changes will be hugely beneficial for life at GHS. However, however, in the short term, changes can be tumultuous and reason for unfair criticism. It is for this reason that, uh, that particularly at the beginning of the year, student government and student activities are paying special attention to, uh, school spirit. Integrating new changes will be most smooth when juxtaposed with school spirit. So to give an example, the new digital ID application will become more popular as we find ways to expand the application's function to class events, club activities and student feedback. As we are early on in the year, the biggest event so far that has taken place, uh, would be the freshman social. Also, all freshmen were invited to attend the social where they could play carnival games, hang out with friends and get to know each other. To quote my little sister, it was cool. Uh, very soon we will be in the midst of, uh, homecoming week. Similarly to previous homecoming weeks, we will kick off with the homecoming dance, followed by themed dress up days and concluded, uh, with the varsity football match where our state champs will take on Darien High School. One last note on the school community. As in previous years, each class or grade is planning, uh, to host at least two events in order to foster a more unified school environment. So far, the senior class led by Ishi, uh, has confirmed they will be bringing back last year's highly coveted school-wide badminton tournament. Uh, and the other classes' events are still in the works. So I will have more information on their events next month. Um, before I yield my time, I wanted to talk about my personal goals as the student body vice president. When I look at the student body at our school and, and the, and the student government, I see boundless potential to be impactful. It is my hope this year that I will be able to be both a catalyst for positive impact at GHS and an advocate of my peers in their pursuits to make a positive impact. I'm thrilled to have been given this opportunity and over the coming year, I am eager to work with the Board of Education, the GHS faculty and the student body to make our school a more vibrant place. On behalf of my peers, I want to thank the board again for this opportunity to speak tonight. And now it is my honor to pass the mic over to the student body vice president, uh, the student body president, Caleb Kalum.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones and members of the board. I am Caleb Kalund and I'm honored to say that I am the student body president of Greenwich High School. I'm excited to begin this year by building on the past to forge a better future. The many goals that Omar and I have planned out for the year are just the start of how we will begin to see student government through a new lens. To speak on my plans for student government as a whole, I want to rebuild and restore student government to its pre-pandemic glory. COVID took a huge toll on the effectiveness of our communication as well as the overall excitement around student government. You've heard from our former presidents about their amazing work. Their impact is still, still felt today. I want to see students feel exhilarated at school events again. And I want there to be more participation and to hear from the student body overall. I want students to participate in school initiatives and share their feedback on issues that they care about. And this is something that Omar and I have already begun to work on. The, the redesign of our quintessential student center is a major topic that has been discussed thoroughly throughout the student body. I've been able to experience the new furniture and spaces that have been created. And I've heard both positive and negative feedback surrounding this change. At the beginning of the year, the new concept was not very well received. Though as people get adjusted and accustomed to this change, their feedback has changed as well. Some students initially questioned how much money was spent on the project, but they are now beginning to understand and appreciate all that this space has to offer. I am hopeful that current and future generations of GHS students will be able to enjoy the space as time goes on. In terms of our student government structure, we have considered many new approaches for this year. First, we have revamped our process for identifying class representatives. Not only will multiple students have from the same advisor base be allowed to run as a representative contrary to last year, but we have also reintroduced the previous inter interview process. This will help to ensure the efficacy and enthusiasm of all our class representatives. We will also be capping the number of representatives per grade to be 20. This creates a sense of closeness, whereas before people may have felt more distant and not able to easily voice their opinions. We will continue with our model of ExCom as we have for the past two years. And our first mass meeting with our newly elected representatives is next week on September 28th. We are also adapting our subcommittee structure to be the most efficient and effective. From issues related to food services to environment, to the environment and to advisor base and more, we have established specific focuses for each of these subcommittees. I'm excited to continue with this evolved structure and see its, see its success this year. The primary goal for student government leaders this year is to find more ways to effectively communicate with the students, with our administration and with you, members of the Board of Education. We are looking forward to use new communication tools such as Minga, our new GHS school ID application, which we seek to make a one-stop shop for all things going on at GHS. In that same manner, I will be sure to contact this board whenever there is something that is pressing and to provide updates in between our meetings so that you know about student concerns and all that is happening at GHS. I am so very excited to begin this year as with you all as we embark on another great journey through new leadership at GHS. I hope you all are as excited as I am to see how we realize our full potential. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening and I look forward to speaking you, with you again next month.
We get the pleasure, myself, Dr. Jones and my friend Karen Hersch up here have the pleasure of meeting with ExCom, uh, the student government. Both the, uh, all of the classes have their president and vice president. He's our student body president and vice president. We really, really enjoy meeting with them, hearing their ideas, here, listening to them, express themselves. It's really rejuven, it's invigorating for me. Karen, what do you think?
It's probably one of the best parts of the job, actually, hearing from the students and knowing what we discuss up here, actually, uh, seeing how it impacts them and, and getting their feedback. So I always find it a pleasure. And I appreciate them coming every month to our board meeting and sharing their thoughts with, uh, the community as well.
Thank you, Karen. And now my friend Lil Perone from the GEA.
I just got off the hockey pitch. I changed my shirt though, but I got my, my kilt on still, so. Hey, wow, here we go again. Welcome, everyone. Oh, push the, pull it down. All right, making fun of my height, huh? All right. Good evening, Chairperson Kelly, Dr. Jones, board members. Um, and Omar and Caleb on your, your, uh, first, uh, and not the last, uh, uh, board meetings to our community members and to my, um, GE, GEA friends and GPS staff. I want to thank, uh, you know, we had a little, little bit of a bumpy start. Nothing that we couldn't handle. Um, you know, we're one-to-one district. It wasn't, it was out of our control, couldn't, didn't have wifi and things. But I want to say thank you to, um, all my GEA members and all the GPS staff who all my G E A members and all the G P S staff who um uh made it through uh without Wi-Fi and did what they had to do and do what they always do, come here and get the job done. So I wanted to do a shout out for uh everyone. I was quite intrigued with um the Greenwich Youth Survey um results. There's a lot of data and information there. That would that I would like to revisit again, um but I want to keep it layman terms and keep it simple. Just some basic things that um really popped out uh at me and and reading and going through all those documents. Now, um, we all know the obvious, uh the protective factors. Um, those are the uh factors that there's a lower likelihood of negative behavior. It's not really much different with with students and and adults, but it impacts uh students uh more at this early stage in their life. Um, and you could probably all list them now, you know, it's uh trusted adults, having trusted friends, being involved in sports, community service, clubs, uh organization. Um, and those are the things that are free. In in the survey, this doesn't count anything that, you know, costs money. Are you having food? Do you have enough clothes? These are things that are that are free, that are offered through the Greenwich Public Schools. What really popped out at me, um, remember this number? It it fluctuates a little, but it's pretty pretty steady with uh like twelve to sixteen percent um male uh male and females respectively. Fourteen to sixteen percent of our students don't have any of the things according to the the data there. They don't have a trusted friend or adult. So remember that fourteen percent aren't involved in the sports, in the community. Another fourteen to sixteen percent, and there's a lot of things. I'm just going to highlight some things that we could really uh touch on and 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 really feel here. Fourteen uh to sixteen percent of our students, I feel, I feel like not in control of my life. I feel that I'm not valued or appreciated. I feel I have no purpose. I feel um I don't have the ability to deal with disappointment. I feel that teachers don't care about me. I feel that students don't care about me. I've been bullied. I'm anxious quite often. I'm sad and depressed. Now, this is a great school system, a great opportunity. But to me, that's not good enough in my book. If we have fourteen to sixteen percent of our students, um, I think we need to take a deeper dive on why they're feeling this way. Are they the same cohort? That's not involved in all those activities. Um, you know, what I think it it's too big. It's not good as as you say, we want to be number one. There's fourteen to sixteen percent of our students, and those are just the ones that filled out the su- survey. I think we really um really need to uh focus on that. And then I'll go to the other pendulum, replace the word of students with the word teachers. How many teachers are feeling anxious? How many, you know, um, don't want to go there on my first speech, but I want to focus on on the students. I I think this is great information, but I'm looking for us to engage in a deeper conversation. Um, because that to me, that's fourteen to sixteen percent is just just too much. And we can, we can do better and we will do better. So I continue to uh look forward into having a a dialogue with the cabinet on some uh action plans on that. And my last thing, uh, September thirtieth, gloves up, G A will be there. G A will be there. All right.
Thank you, Lil. Okay, now we have John Fisher, our P-Tech President. Oh, here comes Sean.
Oh, no. Interesting. It's interesting that you say that, though. Um, Chair Kelly, B O E members, Superintendent Jones, everyone here, everyone listening. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, I am, as Joe said, John Fisher, the Greenwich P T A Council President. I'm the parent of two of the eight thousand five hundred great kids in the Greenwich Public Schools, including those amazing students that were uh recognized earlier and our amazing student body leadership students. Uh, the P T A Council is an umbrella organization made up by and for the fifteen independent P T As in town. Uh, I'm going to take a moment to remind everyone that now is the time to join your P T A at your local school. Uh, your P T A needs your help and support to continue to do the great work we do in partnership with the schools to create the very best educational experience for all the students. Last year, we had four thousand P T A families in Greenwich. It's a twenty percent increase over the year before. And we invite everyone to join this year. Tonight's agenda is full with important topics. Uh, we wanted to call out a few. I'm going to follow up on what Lil said. The Greenwich Together Survey shows many positive indicators and trends. Um, but we should be concerned with that the rate of persistent sadness or hopelessness among the ninth to twelfth grade kit students is twenty six percent. Now that is sad, and that's not a pun. Not surprisingly, the findings also highlight, as Lil pointed out, how important it is for the schools and the P T As to have the resources they need to offer to create the opportunities for student engagement in sports, clubs, community service and other activities. I'll disagree just a little bit with Lil. Those are not free. It takes resources. It takes work. It takes effort. Um, and uh that's that is highlighted in the in the survey. On the Western Middle School soil remediation, we're thrilled that the shovels are going to be in the ground this year on this long, long, long overdue project. On the superintendent goals, we appreciate the thoughtful alignment of these goals with the achieved twenty twenty seven district priorities. We believe this drives consistency around higher standards up and down the district. Uh, and we urge the B O E to approve these goals. And now I'd like to turn attention to the elephant in the room. It will come as no surprise to anyone that P T A Council urges the B O E to vote affirmatively, as all eight of you have done over and over again unanimously, to support the interim appropriation for the new C M S building. Even if that support is contingent on M I approval. This should not, this should not be a discussion item. There's been enough time. There's enough information. This is an action item that needs to be voted on and approved. We here, we, the P T P T A Council, hear over and over again from many of our four thousand P T A families that they feel sadness or hopelessness over the penny wise, pound foolish dithering that is blocking critically urgently needed school projects from moving ahead. We hear from many of the more than one thousand P T A families at Central Middle and its feeder schools that they're looking at alternatives outside of the Greenwich Public Schools because they've lost faith in that the elected officials in town will ever be able to move forward on the badly needed replacement for this crumbling school. The B O E's webpage says the Board of Education shall govern in a manner that sets the national standard for stewardship of the public education system. It's time to govern. It's time to demonstrate stewardship. And it's time for this board to show others that it's time to stop the dithering. Thank all of you for your public service, um and thanks to all of the people who are here exercising their civic engagement. Uh, I'd like to remind everyone to join your P T As tomorrow, and thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, John. And now it's the community comment portion of our evening. Uh, Karen Hirsch will be reading off the names. Uh, and she will read a name, then maybe a second name so they can come down and get ready. We have what, three minutes they're allowed? And if we reach, we have how many speakers? We have twenty three speakers, so please, if you don't need to take your three minutes, uh just say your point and then let somebody else speak. Uh, because when we reached like an hour, then the remaining speakers will have to speak at the end of the meeting. And there is a heavy stack of stuff here that could take us some time. So if you could be conscious of others around you, that would be great. So Karen, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Well, I didn't know if uh if our vice chair was going to read a few of the board policy comments on that public speaking. If not, I can take care of it. Uh, I just, as Chairman Kelly reminded everybody, it's three minutes that are allotted to each speaker. We are going to be asking you to be respectful in your comments, uh that, you know, i- if there is boisterous conduct and we will uh have the opportunity to ask people to leave. You can object to the criticism of district operations and programs, but please, uh, we encourage you to address complaints concerning individual personnel through the proper chain. And uh please express yourselves in a civil manner with due respect and dignity for the privacies of others uh who may be affected by your comments. And uh as again Chairman Kelly noted, we will be putting an hour aside for public comment. Uh, if we go over, um, we may be asking the remaining speakers to stay and speak at the end. Uh, and I think that's about it. And I will, with that, I will call our first speaker of the evening, uh Jill Kelly, who I don't, is she? Oh, she is back there. Come on up. You're the next contestant on public comments. Uh, following, following Ms. uh Ms. Kelly will be Mr. Camillo, who I saw sneak in earlier. Oh, there he is.
I thought he was going to go before me. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jill Kelly, mother of four children who all attended C M S. With my youngest finishing there over four years ago, I'm also an ex-P T A president, Realtor with Sotheby's International Realty, having worked in Greenwich real estate for over twenty years, member of the Greenwich R T C, former member of the Greenwich R T M, and wife of Board of Education Chair Joe Kelly. I can't believe I have to be here to express my support for construction of the new Central Middle School for a hundred and twelve million dollars. But I thought that it was very important that I do. We should all be supporting this. The quality of our public schools, including the facilities, is directly reflected in the value of our real estate. Buyers are always concerned about the state of our schools and want to make sure they're the best for their children. They come to live here because they think Greenwich has the best of everything. Greenwich Public Education and facilities should be the envy of other towns. We should be trusting that the representatives on the Building Committee and the Board of Ed have looked into and discussed all possible options for the new C M S building and are doing what's best for our community. I have personally witnessed the exhausting time spent by all involved. Ongoing meetings by the committee as well as meetings open to the public. There should never be a question in any parent's mind whether Greenwich Public Schools is a good option. I'm tired of our residents being divided by Republicans and Democrats. This causes unnecessary delays and bad feelings in our town. Greenwich is better than this. We should be voting and moving forward on what is best for Greenwich, not blindly being told to be for or against something depending on your political party. We need to learn to work together. Our town should be an example for all to admire and follow. Thank you.
Next up is uh Fred Camillo and following Fred will be Catherine Mcursie.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, everybody. Um, first of all, thank you for all that you do. The Board of Ed along with the B E T and P and Z tend to be the most labor intensive and at times thankless positions in town. And I know you get big paychecks, but uh just know that most people appreciate all that you do here. I do want to speak, uh, just to clarify a couple of things that I've been hearing as I go around town and what I've been reading, mostly on social media. First of all, I one hundred percent support the building, rebuilding of this and soon. Um, it's long overdue. Um, a lot of time and effort has been gone, put into it by this this board, the Building Committee, the the community. The questions are great. Uh, we need those questions answered. I think that a lot of uh effort has gone into it. But there seems to be uh a narrative that's out there that um there's a stall out there and that uh this M I situation, I just want to clear it up. Uh, it's absolutely, somebody, a member of the B E T asked me for a clarification. A town attorney who's been here for over forty, about forty years and a former, he was a former town attorney, but in the law department now. So uh basically clarified, it was pretty simple. You do need M I going forward. And I thought about it. We've been through this almost on every project. If you think back to New Lebanon, which is widely regarded as the most successful in recent times, um, that took two years. I think they had to go back twice for M I. Uh, the Cardinal Stadium effort, thank you, Joe, for getting that done. Um, that that was a battle. Just last year, the rink, which is something that I really truly support and a lot of lots of people do in town. Uh, I had to pull that back because I didn't have it. But I just want people to know it's the process. We have to follow it, but I want it to get done. Unnecessary delay will cost us more money. And I think we're almost there. I do think people, uh, both sides of the aisle are working really hard. I do think the overwhelming majority of the people want to get this done. And at the end of the day, we've seen this over and over again. Ten years from now, people won't remember this stuff. They'll just remember the structure that was built. And we want to make sure that it's something that will last for for generations and something that we're all going to be very proud of. So I really appreciate your time. I just wanted to clarify that for all of you. And again, thank you for all that you guys are doing here, and thank you for your support.
Up next is Catherine Mcursie and following Ms. Mcursie is Janet McMahon.
Good evening Chair Kelly, Dr. Jones, Board of Ed members and G P S community. My name is Catherine Mcursie and I'm speaking to you this evening as a concerned parent of a fourth grader and a tenth grader. I have three questions this evening. Number one, concerning the recent news about municipal improvement plan or M I. This is my question. When there is a forced or emergency rebuild as in C M S, does the paperwork requirement stand in the same way? Especially if it blocks the required rebuild? In the cases of the North Mayanis ceiling collapse, C C S flood, C C S fire, was there an M I required and was it putting a halt on the project's timeline? Question two, when the now three year clock plus clock runs out on the requirement to rebuild C M S, what will the plan be for the teachers, staff, administration and students who will be in the building at that time? Those of us who have children and loved ones who would be here deserve to know what the plan is so we can make an informed decision. And finally, for the community at large, if you have a moment, cast your mind back to middle school and ask yourself, did I worry about the structural safety of my school? Whether you did or whether you didn't, we're fortunate to be in a community with the means to make sure that all the buildings are safe. Other communities struggle with these problems that we have the means to not struggle with. If you're still listening, I asked four questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Janet McMahon to be followed by Tom Kazon. Cass's own. Sorry if I mispronounce anybody's last name.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Jones and guests. Can you hear me? Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and thank you for your time and dedication as elected public servants representing the nine thousand plus students of Greenwich Public Schools. While some of you may know me as a member of the R T M in District Eight and delegate to the Education Committee, I am speaking tonight as a C M S parent, a Greenwich taxpayer and a November voter. First off, a general note on the capital budget. I didn't see the G H S self cell tower project in the draft capital budget. And as you may recall, it was cut last year. I was just at G H S last night for open house and I would like to state for the record that cellular service is still awful. I only see the Wi-Fi cabling and outdoor Wi-Fi in the budget, but cellular service is a much needed security upgrade in the event that Wi-Fi is not available. So I do hope that you will consider putting it back in the capital budget for this year. At any rate, I'm wearing blue and white tonight to show my support and pride for Central Middle School and to also respectfully ask for your support for an interim appropriation of forty nine point five million dollars so that the Central Middle School construction can finally commence. I think we can all agree that the construction of C M S is long overdue, nineteen months overdue to be exact. In February of twenty twenty two, you may recall that this very building was condemned. My then seventh grader, who is now a ninth grader, was just coming off winter break when we got the call and email that C M S was dangerous and unsafe for human occupancy. Then came nineteen months of delays. Ed specs were written, voted, approved, then sent back for revisions, then revoted, then reapproved. Budgets were cut, arguments over architects and owners reps were hashed out, second opinions on cost estimates sought, legal opinions rendered, et cetera, et cetera. Stall tactics are now the status quo, but it doesn't have to be. Let's right this ship tonight, be the agent of change and do right by these kids. Tonight, I ask you to put politics aside and speak for the current and future C M S children who deserve a safe school fit for human occupancy. Build them a beautiful future, build them a beautiful next generation learning facility. Build them a beautiful future, build them a beautiful next-generation learning facility that will last many generations and improve not only the aesthetics of the immediate neighborhood, but the property values of all Greenwich residents. The time is now, let's get this done. Please vote yes to an interim appropriation and send a message to the 508 children who have been patiently waiting for a new school for 19 months that they matter and that we have not forgotten about them. Thank you for your consideration, and again, thank you for your service to Greenwich Public
Next up is Tom Casazon, followed by Frances Novae.
Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the board, my name's Tom Casazon. I'm currently one of the presidents of the PTA at North Street School. Tonight, I'm speaking as a longtime resident of Greenwich for about 40 years, the proud graduate of GPS, this school in fact, and currently the father of four children, one of whom attends Central and three of which are at North Street eagerly waiting to progress to this great school. Tonight, just my message is simple, I'd like to express support of all the work the Building Committee's put in and all the work you all have put in to, to progress the rebuild of CMS to this point. Tonight, I encourage you all to not wait 10 years, though, for this to happen, and please unanimously vote in support of progressing the progress, project along, fully support the entire budget of the project, and please do not cause any further delays to the rebuild so that our community, the teachers of this building, the administration, and most importantly, our students can benefit from the fabulous new school that awaits them. Thank you.
Next up is Frances Novae, followed by Matthew Kane.
Hello, this is Frances Novae, mom of two Central Middle School Cougars and one Greenwich High School Cardinal. Tonight, I cheer on our new GHS student government leaders and our new PTAC presidents and PTA presidents, and speak tonight as a PTAC past president. This week, I read a Fast Company article about belonging and social connection. The article shared the results of a nationally representative study that found that 60% of Americans strongly agree to feeling belonging in America, but only 35% strongly agree to feeling belonging in their communities. The study pointed to a general alignment with the idea and ideals of America, but a gap in our day-to-day connections. And for those under 45, the percentages slipped even lower. The study looked at what drives belonging. Respondents said that they feel belonging when everyone has a chance to have their voice heard, and people can be who they want to be. But stronger still were responses that connected communities provide a place where people like me can succeed, and America creates opportunities for people. I see this same tension in our Greenwich community. Specifically, as we head towards a vote tonight or a vote on Election Day, there are many who want a chance to have their voice heard through letters to the editor, social media comments, or three minutes at the podium. But as noted in the research, a true sense of belonging and connection comes through opportunities to contribute and to succeed. This school we are gathered in has fallen apart. This school is no more. This school building has served its useful life. A true, tonight, this school is your place to succeed and strengthen belonging in our community. Please use your collective expertise, insights, and influence for our children and our children's children. Set your legacy and vote unanimously with courage and strength to approve a request for the allocation of funding to build a new Central Middle School. Put a shovel in the ground for the kindergartners, the first graders, the second graders, the third graders, and the fourth graders of Cos Cob School, Julian Curtis School, North Street School, and Parkway School. Put shovels in the grounds for the fifth graders who will enter a building beyond its useful life. Put a shovel in the ground for the town of Greenwich.
Next up, Matthew Kane, to be followed by Jackie Holman.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Kane. I am one of the co-presidents of the Central Middle School PTA, grateful to be here tonight for the first time as one of the presidents, speaking on behalf of the organization. I am proud to represent the voices and aspirations of our hundreds of parents, teachers, and most importantly, students, who I can assure you, as I think is reflected in the pause or lack thereof we've heard tonight, are reading, watching, and listening to all of the proceedings relating to the construction of a new CMS. Like others, I am here to urge you tonight to support making an interim application for funding to allow the construction of a new CMS to move forward. No one genuinely disputes that the construction of a new CMS building is needed. I will skip a few lines in my notes here, because others have already expressed the concerns about the infrastructure and safety concerns. But I'll say in, in some, a, a new CMS is not a nice-to-have. It's a critical infrastructure update necessary to serve and protect our students and community and must be treated as such. The Board of Education has to date recognized the dire need for a new CMS. You have unanimously approved prudent and practical plans for a new building. You have adjusted those plans in response to frankly unreasonable budget constraints, most importantly, without compromising the educational specifications. We and the PTA are grateful for your efforts to date. However, I urge you not to waver now at this critical juncture. Take any other path at this point, or simply continue the endless delay that appears to be a feature, not a bug, of the approval process in this town. Acquiescing to brazenly political efforts to delay making any decision, public decision on CMS until after the upcoming elections would be a terrible mistake that will threaten to derail the entire project. It is also fiscally unsound, and I assure you the irony of those who accuse the Board of Education and the PTA and its individual members of being frivolous with town resources while burning cash in the form of escalation costs and the clock is continually running on the five-year remedial measures is not lost on us. I implore you to vote in favor of making this application and to work diligently to secure the necessary resources for the construction of a new CMS. Please consider the, the long-term benefits a new CMS will bring to our town, our students, and families, and continue to act in their best interest. Thank you all for your dedication to our community and its educational system.
Next up, Jackie Holman, to be followed by Dina Urso.
Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Jones. Before I get started tonight, I wanted to thank Principal Mayo and the teachers at the high school for a lovely and informative open house last night. I really appreciated having an opportunity to learn more about my children's classes and the year ahead. What I don't appreciate, though, is the sneaky implementation of digital ID in the high school. I really can't believe that you threatened to withhold information from students who either don't have a phone or who don't want to be monitored by Minga. The fact that you directly contacted students first and told them that they were required to download an app on their personal devices is outrageous. Even worse is the fact that many parents weren't made aware of the switch to digital ID until Friday night, the same day that students were given as the deadline for downloading the app. Parents were never informed which Minga modules would be implemented. The family note just mentioned it would be used for hall passes, bus routes, library books, and exclusive announcements. But what about the other modules, like the behavior module that can be used for rewarding desired student behavior and automating consequences for unwanted behavior? Will that ever be used? And who decides what behavior is desirable anyway? Is it based on the equity lens? What about Minga's anti-bullying technology? Can that be used to monitor and censor free speech of users on the platform? Will you roll that module out? Well, you might only be--
Jackie, I just gotta jump in for a second. Kind of like stick to agenda items to discuss, and I, we always like to hear your opinion on things. But when you tell a version of your interpretation of how you, you view this, this app, we don't get a chance to say our version of it. So if we could stick to an agenda topic, that would really be helpful, because they're going to hear one side of a story, and you know it's important to hear both sides of the story, right?
I understand that. Joe, our policy doesn't require them to stick to the agenda items. It says--
Actually, it does, if you're signing up for agenda.
Yeah, there's an option for other, they can talk--
Stand corrected, Carrie.
What is she signed up for?
Okay, what, so while, while you may only be using--
She signed up for CMS. So Karen, true, thank you for pointing that out.
While you may only be using one module of Minga, okay, while you might only be using one module of Minga right now, what's to stop you from adding others in the future? It's a really slippery slope when you have a system like this in place. Too many of us remember what happened when a pattern like this played out with COVID. First, we were told it was two weeks, then we were told it's just six feet, then we were told it was a mask, and then it was a vaccine, and then before we knew it, vaccine cards were required to attend events and just to go out to restaurants. It happened so quickly, and it's still not over. And now we see a similar thing sitting on top of the slippery slope with digital ID. Right now, you're telling us it's just a hall pass, for now, until it's not. And given the lack of transparency around important decisions in the past, parents can probably count on being the last group to know what happens, and it shouldn't be that way. And speaking of things that shouldn't be that way, I brought each of you a copy of the Greenwich Back to School Book Spectacular. It features library books rated with a similar system as the movie, movie rating system of America.
Thirty seconds.
It includes, it includes excerpts from books that are rated child guidance and teen guidance. It also includes books that are rated adult content only, meant for ages 18 and up. You can find this guide online by Googling Greenwich Back to School Book Spectacular. Parents would like to know exactly which BOE policy supports the inclusion of specifically the adult-rated content in the school library.
Next up is Dina Urso, followed by Bob Chaney.
Good evening, my name is Dina Urso, and I'm a parent of three sons, two of whom attend CMS in sixth and eighth grades, and one who attends North Street School in first grade. You may recognize me from having spoken at many of these meetings in my role on the CMS PTA, but tonight, I'm speaking as an individual, mother, taxpayer, and lifelong town resident. As an undergrad, I was a history major. I love the lessons history can teach you, if we pay attention. I thought it'd be fun to take a trip down CMS memory lane, if you will, and see what can be learned from the history of the rebuild of CMS thus far. Some milestones I clearly remember, and you probably do too. Do you remember when the building was closed by town officials for being unfit for human occupancy? I do. Do you remember when students had to be displaced at three different schools while not knowing whether they would have anywhere to go when they returned to school after winter break? I do. Do you remember when a back of the number, a back of the envelope number suddenly became a non-negotiable budget figure, seemingly written in stone with no designs or drawings to back it up? And then that number became the actual appropriation given to this project, all before cost estimates were complete? I do. Do you remember when there were grown adults handing out flyers in the school drop-off line here, like our school was some sort of fairgrounds, and their propaganda had any place in it? I do. Do you remember BET members on the record in a public budget committee meeting pitting schools against one another, saying that if CMS costs too much, then other schools would lose out, as if we were bratty teenagers asking for the most expensive shoes or bag? I do. Do you remember when projects followed a certain trajectory and timeline until suddenly they didn't? I do. Despite admonishments by some to not look back, how can we, as parents and taxpayers, not only look back, but question how and why we got here, practically begging our town government to build a safe school for our children? So much has gone on surrounding this rebuild, and so little of it has focused on the education of our kids. Parents have had enough of the political maneuverings. Like I said at the last public forum on behalf of the PTA, I'll repeat tonight as a mother. This is a school building to teach children in, not a battleground for politicians to campaign upon. In closing, I ask you, the BOE, to request the interim appropriation that is needed for this project to move forward. The can has been kicked down the road long enough. The history of Greenwich, when it comes to adequately funding projects dealing with school infrastructure, is not a rosy one. Learn from it, and don't repeat it, please. I hope your vote tonight is unanimous--
Thirty seconds.
--to show parents who are watching that you have our children at the forefront of your duties as Board of Education members. Thank you.
Next up is Bob Chaney, to be followed by Kerry Gruss.
We'll be sparring after. Everyone is welcome. All right. Good evening, my name is Bob Chaney, and I'm here as a parent of two kids who attend Central Middle School. I wanted to speak about the Central Middle Project, Central Middle School Project, and I was going to say a few things about decorum as it pertains to public speaking, but I think that that's already been handled in a very, a great way. So I'll just talk about Central Middle School. I'm here tonight to ask for your full support for making an interim application for funding for the construction of a new Central Middle School building. I know that, and I'm appreciative of, the fact that the BOE and the district have been on the side of building CMS to the size and scope necessary. At the Central Middle School Building Committee earlier this month, I went into detail about the two-team system that is currently being used at Eastern Middle School, Central Middle School, and Western Middle School. With this system, there must be 30 classrooms, 30 classrooms and 800 square feet of classroom with the addition of stairs, hallways, a gymnasium, a cafeteria. I know I'm forgetting something to ADA compliance, probably forgetting some other things, but this is what the project needs to make sure our middle schoolers get the educational space that they need to thrive in this town. As I said, I feel that the BOE has been working with the parents who have kids in public schools to do whatever they can to make sure that our children get a great education here in Greenwich. My issue is what happens after the BOE approves funding. The projects are then sent to the BET for approval of funding. That is consistently where the buck stops. There's an even number of Democrats and Republicans on the BET, with one of the Republicans being the deciding vote, if there's a tie. Unfortunately, this always goes down partisan lines. Therefore, the BET has consistently been voting against funding our public schools, with Central Middle School being the school in question at this time. They have underfunded other public schools in previous years and are looking to do the same with Old Greenwich in the future. The BET is defunding our public schools. I have spoken in BET meetings in the past, and I plan on speaking in BET meetings this year as well. The BET needs to understand that this is a major issue and is key to many people who will be voting this November. If this interim is passed by the BOE, I urge that the BET fully fund this. Let the parents of Greenwich understand that you care about our public schools. Thank you. Good night.
Next up is Kerry Gruss, to be followed by Blake Giffen.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Kerry Gruss, and I'm a parent of a sixth grader at CMS and a third grader at North Street School. I don't need a lot of your time. I simply wanted to come out tonight to ask that you please do everything in your power to keep the Central Middle School project moving forward. Our kids cannot and do not deserve to wait while some politicians in this town play, continue to play games and create further stall tactics. Yes, the cost is high, but delaying just raises that figure. Please continue to be a positive force in moving this extremely necessary project forward. These renovations were temporary fixes, and the clock is ticking.
Next up is Blake Giffen, followed by Dorothy Simone. Is, is Blake, is Blake here or online, anyone? Oh, there's no online? Okay. All right, then, I guess next is Dorothy Simone, followed by Mary Peretti.
Okay. Good evening, all, and thank you so much for your service and all of your hard work for our schools, we really appreciate it. My name is Dorothy Cassasari-Simone. I have a son in second grade at North Street School, and I have a six-month-old daughter. My fear with what has been happening with the rebuild of CMS is that it will not even be done by the time my daughter is ready to attend. It is so sad to me that this building was condemned and students were displaced, and yet here we are, close to two years later, and we still do not have a shovel in the ground. I urge you, please, to vote unanimously for our children to please move this project forward. We have enough to be afraid of as parents and as young students, with all of the gun violence that's happening in schools, that this is something that we really should not have to be worried about, that something may happen to our kids because of the structure of the building. Please, I vote, I urge you, I'm sorry, to please vote and move this project forward. I really appreciate all that you do, and I really hope that you will please think of our children and all of the children that are coming up from the elementary schools that deserve a safe place to learn. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Mary Peretti, followed by Jody Applegate-Kay.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all very much for being here, and thank you for everything you do for us, really appreciate it. I'm Mary Mulcare Peretti, proud graduate of CMS in 1993. First time I've walked in the building was tonight, since about 1993. Looks the same, looks exactly the same, including the music stand holder, the same. But that being said, I, you know, I think if, if I can provide a different, unique perspective tonight-- But that being said, I, you know, I think if I can provide a different, unique perspective tonight, I'm also an emergency medicine physician. I've spent my career at Level One Trauma Centers, some also some Level Two and some Level Three. But what I do not want for our community and for our children is for our emergency medicine system and for me as an emergency medicine physician to be on the receiving end of a phone call, which I have been on the receiving end of before, that says, "This is 911 dispatch, calling in a mass casualty incident. Ceiling has fallen. Local elementary school, local middle school in this case. Potential 500 children involved, potential 100 adults involved. How many can you take?" The answer is a fraction of that, is how many I can take. And that's at a Level One Trauma Center in the middle of Manhattan. Greenwich Hospital. A fraction of that, right? As a parent, you know, I have a second grader, and I have a rising kindergartner. Shame on me for sending my kids to school that might put us in that position. Right? Because I know what happens on the back end, which is really sad. And we don't want that for our community. We don't want that socially. We don't want that emotionally. And we don't want that financially, because that's expensive. Because if you just want to talk finances, that shuts down Greenwich Hospital for days. All elective surgeries go away. The hospital tries to become a trauma center, which it is not. Right? And everything just disappears. That is costly. So the budget that you already have outlined, add a lot more. Right? Because then you are going to be forced to fix the school. And you're going to be forced to fix a lot more with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jody Applegate-Kay, followed by Jenny Rips.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jody Applegate-Kay, and my husband and I are proud Greenwich residents, taxpayers, and we have two kids at North Street School in fourth and fifth grade. So this is very, you know, this really hits home. I urge you to seek the interim appropriation to move the CMS project forward. Enough time has been wasted, and when my husband and I moved here from the city to buy a house in Greenwich, Connecticut, and we thought, we have really arrived. I cannot believe I am standing here right now, and it's even a controversy whether to whether to fix up a building to make it safe for our kids. You are galvanizing moderates and people who never come to meetings like this. They're coming out now, and they're talking about this, and I represent hundreds and thousands of other moms and dads out there. Please provide our taxpayers, our town, and especially the kids who have to come into this building with a safe learning environment that they need, where they can have a positive experience. We saw so many wonderful young people today that are so inspiring. I want that for my kids. So please do the right thing, seek the money, and get the project moving. We deserve a new Central Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jenny Rips, followed by Evelyn Stowell. Jenny Rips? No, not here. Okay, then next up is Evelyn Stowell, followed by Janet Stone-McWiggin. Okey-dokey. Is Evelyn here? Okay, so then there is no Evelyn. There is no Janet Stone-McWiggin. Next up would then be James McGovern, followed by Steph Cowie.
Chair Kelly, Dr. Jones, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for all that you do. Your dedication is amazing. You're doing an amazing job, I think is demonstrated by the incredible students, Omar Caleb, Naomi, Amelia, and Bridget, I believe, whose exploits just, I'm in awe of. So to Chair Kelly's point, it shows that the Greenwich schools are providing an amazing education. I'm a parent of three Central Middle School students. We have twins who just started a few weeks ago. They came home first day. My wife and I asked, "So did you like it?" They said, "No, we loved it." And they said, "We love our teachers. They're amazing." And we knew that because their older brother attends, he's a seventh grader. So we knew the teachers were incredible, the staff's amazing, and there is an elite principal here, and I mean that in the good sense of the word elite. Tom Kelly is a real force of nature. So I tip my hat to them and thank them and you for all you do. On the not-so-positive side of things, the school is a disaster. The building itself, rather, is a disaster. For the reasons articulated much more eloquently and powerfully than I could articulate, I urge you to appropriate or vote to appropriate the funds needed to move this as long as quickly as possible. My concern is frankly not with you. My concern is what happens after, which you don't have control over, but I would urge all public school parents and responsible citizens to pay attention to this and to make their voices heard. Because we heard at the September 6th, I believe, building committee meeting, people starting to make excuses like, "Well, there's no urgency." Someone actually said, "There's no urgency here." Someone also said, "It should be smaller because demographics suggest there may be a soon enrollment decline." Well, we're not building a school for 2040. Hopefully, we're building a school that will last till 2140. And let's not be penny wise and pound foolish, as many of the other speakers have articulated. So thank you very much for your time. Keep up the great work. Have a great night. Go Giants.
Next up is Next up is Steph Cowie, followed by, I'm sorry, followed by James Walsh.
I'm performing on Saturday night, so I'll let you know where that is. I'm going to lingerie. Oh, I wish I was. That's for sure. All right. Good evening, everybody. Chairman Joe Kelly, Board of Ed members, and Dr. Jones. I'm Steph Cowie, and I serve as the First Selectment Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities Liaison to Central Middle School Building Committee. The year was 1989. I'm going to take you back a bit. And topping the billboard charts at the time was Milli Vanilli. Do y'all remember Milli Vanilli? Broke onto the scene with "Girl, You Know It's True, I'm Gonna Miss You," and who can forget Blame It on the Rain? This also was the same year, 1989, thirty-four years ago, that GPS and the nation moved to a middle school model to support children's development. The existing Central Middle School was built well before this new model and was developed and previously was built as a junior high school. Fast forward to 2023. We are faced with a definitive timeline to complete the construction and ultimate occupancy in August 2026. The Board of Education specifications require students to stay in place during construction, keeping them together in this formidable time for their growth and development. The CMS community stands at the ready in support of this new school. Further delay will bring significant escalation costs at $13,000 per day. This is incredible. The CMSBC has followed your approved ed specs and your revised ed specs. You should have no doubt that this project is going in the right direction. This project has attracted tremendous oversight, collaboration between the school, committee, Central Middle School community, Board of Ed, Town of Greenwich departments, as well as peer reviews for cost analysis and value engineering. Tonight, we ask the Board of Ed to follow through on your project, your investment in your project, and vote yes for the approval of an interim appropriation request for the CMS project this evening. By design, this building committee serves as an agent to free up the Board of Ed to do its critical work to support our children, and the building committee's singular mission is to execute the Board of Ed's education specifications. The most important specification of this build is the two-team model. The new Central Middle School provides equity because it is consistent with the two-team teaching approach as all middle schools in Greenwich have. The new building will set the standard for middle schools in the 21st century. To quote Central Middle School Principal Tom Healy, "At its core, it is the student-centered approach to complex problem solving with an emphasis on collaboration and innovation. The physical space of the current building is not designed for flexibility. It was laid out to be teacher-centered standalone delivery. It's important for students' sense of belonging to their school and correlation of their sections, achievement levels in middle school, leveraging a team model with respect to physical layout, stronger sense of community." In addition, I do believe that he
Time.
Oh, correct. Sorry. Critical time for the project. I ask you and urge you to please, as a young MC says, he does say bust a move back to 1989.
Thanks, Steph. Next up, we have James Walsh, followed by Andrew Walsh.
Okay, perfect. Good evening all, and thank you to the board and to Dr. Jones for all you do for our school system and for our families here in town. I'm sure you're not thanked enough, so thank you. Thank you again. I'm here asking you today to please push ahead and fight to fund and build CMS as soon as possible. Please vote tonight to move this project ahead and request the interim appropriation that is needed. I would also ask you to fight against any future cuts to the size or scope, to reducing the size or scope of the project. Additional cuts would most likely result in a building that is too small and ineffective almost immediately, you know, or even at completion of the building. While many in the community like to highlight declining enrollment at CMS in recent years as a reason to drastically reduce the size and scope of the project or to send the project back to the drawing board and not fund it now, I urge you to look at the numbers across all three middle schools in town. When combined, this metric has risen about seven and a half percent over the last decade. The middle school population in this town is on the rise. And I'm sure, you know, you might have looked into it, but there's probably outlying reasons for this decline at Central. Are individuals sending their students elsewhere? Are they magnetizing to Western Middle School because they don't want to send their students to this building? Are they choosing an independent school in town for the six to eight years because they don't want to send their children to the building? It does not seem reasonable to me that the small pullback that has been seen recently at CMS is due to the demographics, but is due to parents not opting to put their students at risk by sending them to Central Middle School. Also, please, fight not only for Central Middle School and the immediate needs here, but also continue to fight and push ahead for funding and improvements at Old Greenwich, Riverside, and Julian Curtis. If we continue to let our schools deteriorate, we may enter into a cycle where people bypass Greenwich Public Schools for other options, one that might become irreversible. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Andrew Walsh, followed by Wendy Vizzo Walsh. Vizzo. Oh, you're going first? Okay, let me make a correction there. Next up is Wendy Vizzo Walsh, and followed by Andrew Walsh.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly. Can you hear me? Oh, okay. Oh, is that good? Good evening, Chairman Kelly, members of the Board of Education and Dr. Jones. I'm Wendy Vizzo Walsh, and as you know, I'm running to be your colleague and collaborator on the Board of Education. I stand here as a proud but concerned Greenwich parent of a recent GHS grad who is now a college freshman in Texas. I also have a son and two nephews at Central Middle School. My son is having a great experience here at Central. First, I'm fully in support of a new Central Middle School at a reasonable size and a reasonable cost to taxpayers. I have spoken at length with community members. Many are concerned that it will cost way too much, particularly given the projected decline in student population. Others are concerned that a less expensive school would frustrate the two-team model, which I do support. Regardless of whether tonight's motion passes, I am hopeful that some cost-saving ideas may be in play, which I would be fully in support of, such as a smaller footprint, but with a second story. But anyway, let's get this done because it has been too long. Next, I'd like to share with you some concerns that numerous parents and students have shared with me about the digital identity app that was required to be installed on their devices without the parent's permission. Or is it not required, as some other students have been told? Some students believe that it is just for gaining entry into the building and receiving school announcements and are worried about spotty internet service delaying their entry into the building. Other neighbors are frankly scared that the app's other problematic functions will be enabled. If not this year, perhaps next year, as the student body VP fully anticipates. These features tend to increase control over students. Back when I attended Greenwich High School with my cousins, when it was one of the top schools in the country, and even further back, when my parents attended, schools were given so much more freedom than today to make good decisions as well as mistakes. And I urge the board to move us back in that direction. Parents and students are also concerned about what personal information is being stored on this app and potentially sold to third parties. The board should consider making this app optional, and students should have the choice to carry physical IDs without missing out on important opportunities and announcements. When children and their personal information
Thirty seconds.
are involved and a foreign-owned technology company is involved, I believe we have a heightened duty to be extra careful, similar to our concerns about TikTok. Until students and parents have a complete understanding of this application and the community has had an opportunity to thoroughly vet this app, I strongly urge the board to consider limiting its use, if not altogether. Thank you very much.
Next up, and our last speaker for the evening, is Andrew Walsh.
Thank you. How are you? Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Superintendent Jones, and the other board members. I would like to comment on the student-tracking app that GHS students were required to install on their devices and whether the app should have been more thoroughly vetted and tested before launching. I am concerned that students were told that if they did not install the app, they would miss out on important announcements. I don't know how carefully GPS vetted the terms and conditions of the privacy policy, so I'll briefly go through some of them. Based on my brief review, I have some of the following questions and comments. Students who want to use the app's full suite of services should consider the following. One, did you know the user agreement appears to be a contract between the student and the tech company? I don't see how you can compel students to enter into any agreement with anybody. In this case, an agreement governed by Canadian law with a Canadian corporation based in British Columbia. Did you know that the user agreement permits the company to collect students' personal information and location data? It says the location is not precisely tracked at this specific, at any specific moment in time, but I hope nobody was satisfied by that. Did you know the app company may sell students' personal information to other companies, including any company that may acquire it in the future? It is, after all, a privately backed company, so it is foreseeable that it could be purchased by another company, maybe from another country, that might not value protecting students' personal information. Did you know that the service claims a perpetual worldwide license to anything it wants that's posted on certain areas of its site, including sub-licensing content that students post? Did you know that the service employs an AI bot to review student submissions and then it deletes and censors controversial content without human moderation? This could be a serious violation by GPS of students' rights to free speech. As you probably know, students do not shed their First Amendment rights at the schoolhouse door. I hope that you take these comments into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for those comments. It's great stuff. Now we go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and welcome to our very first meeting of the year. Very exciting. It was great to see our wonderful students that we were honoring tonight. I just, there have been so many wonderful accolades over the last couple of months. We should be really, really proud of what's happening in our schools. I do want to just say we've had a great start to the year. We didn't do convocation this year, as a reminder, but we did add an extra day back in to help teachers prepare. I think that was very well received, and we'll be talking about that with GEA. Lil did mention that we had a glitch with some internet, which was a little bit of a bummer, but the tech team worked really hard to get all that restored. We have a lot of resources that are out in the buildings. I was at Glenville, and one of the teachers was just raving about what a uh, was just raving about what, what a great job number one, our whole curriculum team has done. Making sure that the, the use of the ARP funding is absolutely making a difference out in the classroom, just all of the decodable readers and the materials that they have to teach with, and it is in every single classroom. It's not based on which building had PTA grants or which building, um, you know, was able to fund it through a different mechanism like the Alliance. It's every single building, every single classroom, and it's just, it's fantastic to see. I also want to just point out that Principal McGuire at JC passed on her thankfulness uh, to the building committee, but also uh, to Dan Watson and his team. We were having the heat wave right in those first few days of school. They had air conditioning and even in the gym, which was just fantastic. I also want to just note, we have a lot, if you drive past GHS, there's a lot going on there from a capital standpoint, but they have done a phenomenal job, uh, just rerouting the entrance to the school. The, the students are managing it really well, you know, and ultimately when that project is all done, it's going to be fantastic that guests don't just walk right in the building and mix with our students. They're going to funnel right through the office and so kudos to the administration there. They're making it work with some restructuring this year. Um, I also just want to say thank you to the academic team, the cabinet, our principals, our facilities team. They work all summer long uh, to really be prepared for school to start and they just did a, a great job and have put in a ton of time. And last but not least, I had it on my notes to, to mention the MINGA app. So we only have the digital ID and we are required to have IDs for our students. They use them uh, for to check out library books. They use them in the cafeteria. That's the only module we have. So we, the kids can't post on the app, uh, the kids can't speak to one another. Uh, the administration, mainly Karen Foster, Tom Prera, uh, principals can push stuff out to students. Um, and I know they're working on a note that, that will be in there uh, next. I think it's this week actually. Um, that will actually show you a picture of it, which will be very helpful. Their first communication uh, for this school year went out September the sixth, but I think a lot of parents missed it. Now I will say I haven't had a lot of questions about it. We, the PTA meeting was very well attended. I know Karen, you were there. I don't know how many people you'd guessed were in the room, but it was a lot. The room was packed. Um, and we had a few questions, but really not very many. And I think it's because the students are used to having an ID. But from a safety standpoint, I mean, any of you that have had teenagers know, getting them to keep up with that card in their pocket or wherever it is, it's hard. And one thing they do keep up with is their phone. Um, we did let the students know, we give, we, we issue a digital device. If they'd rather have it on there, they can. Um, and if they absolutely just don't want it, they can have a physical ID. But when student government, as you heard them mention tonight, push out about their dance, if they don't have the digital ID, they, they won't see what's getting pushed out. It doesn't mean they don't have the information. They'll still have to be more manual about getting that either through the emails and read those, which a lot of high schoolers are not really into email, believe it or not. But again, the app is not being utilized uh, in the ways that some people have conveyed, and I just want to reassure you of that. The other thing is um, in the state of Connecticut, we have a data privacy agreement that the companies must sign and the, the data privacy agreement is signed for MINGA. It meets the standards and it's pretty, it's pretty rigorous in Connecticut. So I'll, I'll leave it at that for tonight. But we've had a great start and a great opening.
Well, thank you, Tony. Uh, I'm first going to make a comment and uh, I'm not the, uh, I'm not the tech guy here on our board. So uh, I struggle with these things and I happen to have a relationship with Andrew out there, and I know if he's pointing something out, there's usually something behind that. So Andrew, I'm going to give you a call uh, offline and talk about that stuff and and we'll see if stuff, maybe stuff you could point out that we could have addressed or maybe didn't address, but I'll make sure it gets looked at. So thank you for your comments. Uh, anyone else have any comments uh, or questions? Oh, there you are. Hi Karen.
So Tony, with the information that's pushed out through the app, one is, have we noticed that, well, let me start this way. Do all of our students have phones or capabilities or, or what are we handling at handing out? Because I'm, I'm concerned that there are some students, because we have a diverse population at the high school, that they don't have the proper phone that would be able to download the app, and how are we compensating for that?
They can actually download it on the Chromebook that's issued to them, so they have a digital device available that most of those students, if they don't have a phone, a lot of them still use our digital device anyway, because during COVID, if you remember, we upgraded them, so they're a lot better and faster than the old Chromebooks were. Um, so they can download it on there. And again, if they absolutely don't want it, they don't, they can go and see Karen Foster or Tom Prera and they'll help them with a, just a regular ID.
So, but if they have it on their Chromebook, I mean, is the ID used as a mechanism to, they have to flash their ID to get into certain buildings? So are they flashing their Chromebook?
They're not actually flashing their ID right now. You know, maybe when we get a, the, the safety entrance finished, we'll review some of that, but right now, just with the way students enter, you gotta remember it's twenty seven hundred, it's a lot. And we don't have the capability. We really haven't done that, but when it does become really important is when you have that freshman who wants to be off campus to go to Pizza Post and they're not supposed to be, they're supposed to be, you know, staying in the student center. It allows them to be able to show their ID to security. Um, instead of just, you know, where they might not have been able to find their card, or they're coming back in where they've been off campus and security sees them and then they want to make sure um, that it's appropriate. And all of the, each grade level has a different color, so it's very easy for security to see. Um, and again, that's, it's a, it's a level of safety for kids.
And my last question is, all the information that's pushed out through the app is also going to be equally pushed out through an email or some other form of electronic communication that these kids have access to. So therefore they're not going to miss something.
It's not that they won't miss something, but when you have, I mean, i- if you have push notification, is it easier? Absolutely. It just is. Um, you know, students, if they have to go and find it or go look for it or look at an email, they're just not as likely to do that. They can still do it. That's not going to change. Um, the information will be there and be available. Um, and, and I think the high school does a great job of communicating and so does student government. Um, and I think they have probably, most of the students are, are on the ID. They were, I think about two thousand out of the twenty seven hundred. I'm not sure where they are as of today. And that's just, you know, word of mouth even from the kids. Um, kind of talking about what, how it's used and what it's for.
Okay, Kathleen?
I just wanted to talk about the things that we talked about at this time last year and celebrate that we're not talking about busing. Okay? Um, or traffic? Okay, and I don't, I hope I just didn't curse us, but I mean, the like first few days of school, the fact that it was running like, I mean, we were getting there at like seven forty five, because I'm like, I don't want to be a part of that. But then it's, we've been slipping and there are no issues and to me, that's amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you for the positive.
And if I could, can I give a shout out just to Alma Renee, so who, you know, he was new in his role before and it was a new bus company. He ended up having to go through the change to change the bus company last fall and just worked all summer long, um, you know, with our bus company to make sure that those routes were ready to go. So I just want to give him a shout out.
Karen?
Not to take us back to MINGA, but I do have a quick question. I mean, much like Karen, I would also agree that, you know, more information shared with parents ahead of time would have been very helpful, but now we have the opportunity really to do so, and I, I know that we are planning, so which is great. Um, the one question I do have is the difference between students who have the app um, and students who have uh, a physical ID or those who want to use it on their computer. I know when this, during the school day, I mean, maybe not this year, but they use them to unlock the doors to enter. Um, so if it's not, if students don't have the physical, it on the app, is the app? Uh, yeah, during COVID, they were utilizing that to open the door to be able to enter the school. So I don't know if it's still happening. That's what I was just trying to ask now.
No, during COVID, if you remember, they had to, they were trying to really spread kids out, so kids were using all kinds of doors that they, they don't normally use and they no longer use.
Thank you for answering. I, I would, I didn't properly say that during COVID, I knew it was multiple entrances, so I just didn't know if that was still in effect. Thank you.
Well, it's an interesting discussion because uh, I, as a person who's very involved in sports, now we use all these different apps, SportsU, I don't want to advertise any of them, but there's a bunch of them and all the different teams throughout the school use these apps and communicate with each other. So it's a, it's a good idea. We look at the licensing involved and look at all the involvement and the distribution of information if we haven't already. Uh, certainly we should not just that app we introduced, we should look at all the sports apps that are applied and any other apps that the uh, the kids might use that are part of our organization. So that's a great discussion to begin with.
If we pay for it, it is absolutely vetted and it has to go through the Connecticut Data Privacy and um, Jen Lau is the one that oversees that for us and, and does a great job. And um, but if we, if we pay for it and it's actually truly, because remember, students put apps on their phones and things that we don't even know exist. Um, but if we pay for it, it's gone through the vetting.
Okay, now let's go to officers, committees and liaison. Who would like to begin? Christina?
Thank you. This will be quick. I have two things. Um, on the high school entryway, obviously everybody heard that the project broke ground. Very exciting. Um, we're, the building committee, we're meeting on site um, every other week with the contractors and the architects. It's that we're moving along. Things have been ordered that need to be ordered. We really feel that the project is moving along well. So there's, and then one other report, unless anybody has questions. Karen has a question.
Sorry if you just said it. I truly wasn't listening to everything you said. When is it going to be done?
Thank you. Um, it, it's going to be open for the start of school next year.
Okay, so
We're hopeful that, that, you know, maybe earlier, but we're not counting on, because it's sequencing, right? The timing and waiting for things and breaking through the walls ultimately to the office. So, but it, it, the timetable and the contract provides for it to be done in August of next year.
Okay, thanks.
Speaking as one who serves on building committees, thank you for all that work you put into that. Holy smokes.
It's a, it's a good building committee, so you know, um, we got a lot done. Um, the other thing I was going to report on was the Havemeyer Committee, which Joe and I have been on, um, which is apparently coming to a close, because both of us are leaving, as are our BET colleagues. So the, the, the committee may be totally reconstituted in some shape or form come after November.
Well, it's moving into its next phase.
Next phase, whatever. But, but who's on the committee is going to be reconstituted. But we had an engineer's report um, who came back with all good news that in terms of the structural integrity and safety of the building. Um, and we're kind of wrapping up and whatever the new members look at, you know, kind of next steps for the building, um, if, as and when the administration's going to leave, what, what that entails. So it's kind of, there's a lot of questions. There's no answers, a lot of questions, but and that's where we are, unless there's anything else you want to add, Joe.
Thank you, Christina. Kathleen?
Thank you. Um, just an update from the Greenwich Alliance. We had our first meeting this week. Julie was good enough to then give me some notes. Um, Alliance welcomes everyone back to school. First, the transition to college program for Avid twenty-three graduates was a six workshop series that prepared the students for the nuts and bolts of college. Unbound Innovations XR Camp enrolled thirty students, held at Eastern Middle School. The camp is a result of the hundred and fifteen thousand reaching out grant investment in the Unbound Innovations Project at Western Middle School, championed by uh, Lapari? Did I say that right? Okay. Scholar, scholarships were provided for students. Fifty students took place in the summer college workshop taught by GHS guidance and Alliance professionals. This workshop also stemmed from a previous grant, tariffed pricing based on need. Um, and most importantly, coming up, Turkey Trot, thirteenth annual registration open on October first. Consider sponsoring the race if you have a company and get your company's name on a T-shirt. That's all.
Thank you. Hey, Michael?
So I have, I have three reports.
You're busy, man.
Very exciting. So the um, the Old Greenwich Building Committee also continues to meet bi-weekly over the course of the summer. Um, this week they submitted their preliminary site package to P and Z, so their MI improvement process um, application is fully submitted and it's going to be on it's on P and Z's docket for, for um, first meeting in October. Um, they've, we've met with the, over the summer, they did a lot of work, preliminary site uh, plan. Uh, we passed it around to the, the board solid earlier in the week. Um, they presented um, the building committee, members of the building committee presented it back to school night, the site plan. Um, they're presenting it actually tonight, actually at, at Innes Arden. Um, it's available on the website. Um, the plan looks, the preliminary site plan looks uh, really looks gorgeous. Um, it's been approved by the tree warden. Uh, we've got lots of trees in place. They, it was a leveled plaza, a sloped entranceway. Uh, we have the hardworking members of the committee have tried to learn from the hard knocks of many other building committees in town to make sure all of the boxes have been checked ahead of time. Um, so that continues to move forward. I would take questions on that.
Looks like we're good.
Okay.
Oh, you have a question? Karen has a question.
I was just going to say, um, if you wouldn't mind, when they're doing more of the community engagement meetings, just to let us know the dates in case some of us it's nice to sometimes go and learn, you know, along, you know, others.
The um, Strategic Plan Committee met on Tuesday. Um, that we had a spirited uh, conversation around um, Dr. Jones's superintendent goals and its connection to the strategic plan. So we're going to talk more about that, I imagine, when that comes to the agenda item, but we did meet on Tuesday. And then finally, um, the research, uh, Grant, Research Ed Greenwich continues, plans for that continue to move ahead. So this is the education conference that uh, we are proudly hosting on April sixth. Um, we have over twenty-five speakers confirmed. This is truly, this is going to be a huge event in the town of Greenwich. The, and truly international um, gathering. Um, so Research Ed is a grassroots organization of teachers and researchers who whose nonprofit mission is to connect teachers to research and build communities of practice. The um, Greenwich is going to be the um, third, um, the second school district in the country to hold a Research Ed. It's head, Research Ed came out of England. Um, but uh, after us, there's one um, coming to Delaware and then the state of Utah is actually going to probably host the next Research Ed to give a sense of where we are in the, in the pecking order. Um, so April sixth, they, is the conference at Greenwich High School. Um, the next step is to form a committee, um, not of the board, but of the community. We'll be reaching out to PTAC and GEA and other parents and faculty members and of course GHS. Because the idea here is not only do have all of these folks who have committed from around um, the world really to come to, to Greenwich, but also just equally showcase the great stuff that works here, the uh, and, and our great faculty. Um, the idea is it's, it's half researchers and it's half practitioners, which means teachers. Um, so it's great stuff. Um, but the, um, it was on the agenda, uh, but we pulled it off because we didn't think it was an, an action item. So you didn't see. So if you saw the agenda earlier in the week, you saw the speaker list, but maybe we'll get it out on another agenda. But just to give you a sense, the uh, of who's coming, uh, Tom Sherrington, who um, is the author of the Teacher Head Blog um, and wrote Rosenzweig's Principles in Action and walkthroughs. He's, um, he's a great guy. Robin McPherson, who wrote What Does This Look Like in, in the classroom. Uh, Tom Bennett, who uh, is the founder of Research Ed, is coming from Scotland. Allison Rodman, who wrote The Learning Loop, and Kim Marshall, who is the author of The Marshall Memo, uh, which uh, many, many, many educators around the country get are all coming to Greenwich uh, for this event. So it's going to be really a wonderful day of learning.
Great. I've got a couple of questions. Uh, my business mind is churning. Uh, how many people are we talking?
So I think we're looking between, uh, we, we can probably, this is a decision for the committee, but probably my, my assumption is we can go up to five hundred.
Five hundred. So uh, I'm assuming this is a non-for-profit?
Absolutely. No money touches. Yes, it's a non-for-profit and there is no taxpayers paid money going to fund it. So it's a self-funded event. The registration is sixty-five dollars.
But these people will be uh, staying in hotels here in Greenwich? They'll be eating at restaurants here in Greenwich? They'll be doing all sorts of fun stuff here in Greenwich?
That's right.
So there's plenty of opportunity for our, our community uh, to benefit immensely from this influx of five hundred or so people. And uh, so we certainly have to open it up to the Chamber of Commerce and I know the first selectman said he's going to arrange a meeting uh, with, with us to discuss that. And Michael, you had, you had thought of that and he gave me that suggestion, which I told him, to him. So uh, it sounds exciting, not just on the essence of the conference, but on the exciting influx of uh, visitors to Greenwich. So thank you for doing this. Kathleen?
So just a random question. So they, they're paying for the facility space then?
Um, no, we got, we paid for custo, no, we're not paying for the facility space. The um, we're paid for custodial overtime was, was our cost, but we didn't, we didn't, because they're, because we're, the district is sponsoring the conference.
Okay.
Is your business mind going? Excellent.
Sorry to talk about all the revenue. It was hard for me not to think of being reimbursed.
Of course.
We have total control of the funding, so it's not like.
A conversation to be had later. Karen?
Uh, you threw me there, because I was like, oh, I, I don't remember discussing the paying for, for, for time for that, but I, I'm, I'm awesome. Thank you for that extra information. That's even better. Anyway, I, I was going to give my committee updates if, if nobody else has questions.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, so I first wanted to talk a little bit about CAC, Special Education. They are going to be having their first meeting of the year, this coming uh, September twenty-sixth. Uh, information
Information for accessing that, if you'd like to attend, is on the Greenwich Public Schools webpage for CAC. And as I said, so CAC is the Special Education Advisory Committee. They're also going to be hosting their first speaker in October. Dan Habib is a documentarian and they will be screening his documentary on October tenth. And then he will be coming to speak here on October seventeenth, and more information on that is to come. I'm sure it will be shared, you know, in a weekly newsletter coming soon, so keep an eye out for that. And I also wanted to, on a side note, mention a little thing that's happened at the high school, which I was really impressed with and think everybody should be aware of. Greenwich High School has been working with Filling in the Blanks. It's an organization whose mission is to fight childhood anger. They've worked with some of our elementary schools and continue to do so in the past, and will continue to do so. But we are now one of only two high schools in Lower Fairfield that have a food pantry located in our actual high school. And they'll be providing three meals a day for students to express need for a variety of reasons, to have over the weekend, as well as, as snacks and things like that, so that they will be provided for over the weekend. And I just, I was really impressed by that. And I know that they're sort of working on a, on opportunities to have students who are participating in the program, to be able to pick options and menus. And they're also going to be sort of, we're looking into how to provide midday and pre-extracurricular snacks for students who need that as well, so that they are able to better attend us at school and engage. And they're also going to be looking forward to working with, I think, some of our student clubs during the week for that, and to provide toiletries for students who may need those as well. And I just, I was just really impressed when I heard about that. And I just wanted to share that with the community. So if there is a student of need out there or family, you know, this is something that they should be aware of that's happening at our high school.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Karen?
Along the line of need for food with respect to students, Dr. Jones, I think this goes more to, it's along the same subject matter, but I think the question is more appropriate for you. I understand that, well, this, the state is providing free breakfast for all students. One, is that through every school within the district, and for how long will that last?
So it's where they, from the legislature, they put it forward for the entire year for free breakfast. We have, I believe it's five school sites we were discussing last week that have never served breakfast. And so we're looking at that right now, because I would like for us to start it at those schools. And we had somebody that asked us about it, it's just we've never had it. So we're looking at that right now.
What are the five schools that haven't served breakfast?
Oh, gosh, and you know off the top of your head? I know North Street, but I, I can't, I could probably pull it up, but. No, no. Title I schools all have free breakfast and, and lunch. We actually have one that is school-wide.
Okay. All right, I'll jump in with a conclusion here on, Rob would kill me if I didn't mention J.C. He serves on our committee as well, we meet every other week, we've been doing that, how long now, about a year, year and a half? Exactly. We've made some headway. We have actually identified the location where we're going to be putting the elevator. The elevator, we voted on having it address all three floors, the basement, the main floor, and the top, and the second floor. So we voted on that, we now have that in place, we're moving that forward. We have the funding for it, and now we just have to order the elevator, which the lead time, I'm told, is about a year. So we've got some time to wait on that, unfortunately, so we won't get it done this summer. So we're targeting doing some prep work this summer and then, then doing it next year. We also, we looked at the designs for the new ADA compliant, new security entryway in the front. It looks beautiful, it really, really has a nice aesthetic look. I can actually honestly say, in the renderings, and we all love our J.C. building, we all think it's great, but I actually think it adds to the building a little bit. What do you think, Rob? Do you agree? Yeah, yeah. So I think the architects have done a fine job on that. We met this morning with the, the building department and the fire marshal to go over the preparation for our MI, because we all know how important MIs are nowadays. So we'll be, we'll be getting that, because we're changing the front of the building a little bit. So we have to get an MI for that before we can do anything. So that'll be coming shortly, and the building department is working very closely with us to expedite the process as best they can. Any questions? Oh, Mike, got a question on J.C.?
You got me in suspense now. Where's the, where did you vote to put the elevator?
Hmm, how to describe it? Rob, go ahead and describe it, you're, you're, you, you, go ahead. So it's not by the front door, if you go towards the media center, round back, when you make the turn there, it's kind of like over, over that way. Right? And that's where we make most, ninety-five percent of deliveries into the building come into the basement right there. So would, would really be useful by the custodians. Okay, ti- time to move on. Now, we'll go to, and all are sitting in suspense for an action item. Now, John, I'm not sure whether the proper addressing of this is the nine-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, or it's the elephant in the room. I'm not sure which one is the most appropriate way. No, I'll say with the nine-hundred-pound, nine-hundred-pound gorilla. And so without further ado, Laura, do you have a motion to make?
I believe it's Ms. Stowe who has the honor.
Someone has a motion, okay, good.
We'd like to request an interim appropriation of forty-two million sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars for the CMS building project, subject to and immediately upon the project receiving municipal improvement status.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have some conversation to be had now, discussion?
It suggests that our representative on the committee go first, would be Ms. Costa, and I would love to hear from her first.
Of course. I was waiting for her to put her hand up, actually.
Oh, well.
She was looking shy.
We've, we've talked a lot about this project. As you know, our building committee meets weekly and has, since its inception, we have worked very diligently to vet our estimates for this project. We have a vice chair of our committee standing up in the back at the ready, should we have additional questions. But really, I hope that our board is ready to come together and, and vote for this interim. That is my greatest hope.
Could you read the motion again, please?
Request an interim appropriation of forty-two million sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one for the CMS building project, subject to and immediately upon the project receiving municipal improvement status.
Thank you. Karen?
At, I don't think it was our, maybe it was our last meeting, it was discussed that in order for us to take action, we would need an MI. And that was on the advice of council that was received. And then subsequent memos, I believe we've all received additional email correspondence today, if not earlier this week, reiterating that same advice of council that was received. So the question I have is, with respect to this motion, was it run through council in order to determine whether or not it met the, the legal standard in order for us to have a legally viable vote?
Can I address that?
You may.
We don't have counsel on this. You know, as, as was discussed earlier, you know, the town lawyer has said they don't represent us. They represent Fred, the town, but they don't represent us. So we don't have our own counsel on this matter. And just to kind of, for, for people who might be a little perplexed, what we're talking about, who aren't subject, knowing all the subtleties, the town lawyer issued an opinion at the request of a Republican BET member who asked about it this summer at some point. We don't know when. We found out about it right about the start of school, as did the building committee. It's an opinion. I would submit it's the interpretation of one attorney, because no, no one person is the master of all legal issues. That's why people typically get their own counsel, they have rights to appeal, and disclaimer, I'm a lawyer by training. You'll like it or don't like it, it is what it is.
Christina, can I jump in just for one second? You're speaking on behalf of yourself as a board member, not as the board.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm giving my own commentary, as we all can.
And I value your commentary and opinion.
Much appreciate you. But as I said before, the town attorney doesn't say she represents us. And there, there are some issues with this, in my mind, because the opinion that we received relies on and cites to prior memos as part of this analysis, and some members of this board have asked for those memos, but, but we've been refused to see them. So we could, you could obviously understand how someone could question an opinion that relies on undisclosed documents. Subsequent to discovering all this, the town attorney communicated to us, the board, accurate, you know, it is accurate to say that she will not authorize us to hire our own attorney to get an interpretation on the section of the charter in issue. And if we do, the town's not going to pay for it. So for me, that presents a problem, that we're being denied the opportunity for our own counsel and analysis on the issue, and without any other basis of being told what we can and cannot do. The, the process that's being told we have to follow now has not always been followed by the town. I'm gonna, the, the first election earlier cited to a couple of projects, the stadium and New Lebanon. Both of those projects were funded before there was municipal improvement status. So there is precedent for requesting money before municipal improvement has been granted. So I think this is problematic, so I think we should move forward. It, since we've been denied this opportunity to get our own counsel, I think we should move forward and make the motion and request the funds. And go forward, but, because I, I really do believe in the project.
You mean, subject to MI?
It's still, it is, it's, it's a conditional motion. So query whether that qualifies as action, because that's written differently than what was opined on in the legal memo. That was a building committee motion, which was different than this motion. So I'll leave it at that.
I'm going to go to, oh, you're still, you're still.
Well, yeah, I just want to address a couple of points. I mean, she, first of all, we have a policy, and we as a board could have voted or just, and decided to retain outside counsel. The lawyer cannot avoid that, that policy, or say, or deny us our ability to do that.
Well, she basically said that the town will not pay for it.
I'm not done talking. What I specific, what she specifically said is she said that the town may not reimburse it, but that doesn't obviate the, our ability through policy as a board to have retained counsel. And there's one of two ways in which that could be done. Either the chairman can vote and, and go hire outside counsel without the town attorney's approval, or the board can vote for it, and neither of which happened. So I don't think it's a fair statement to say, simply because she denied us counsel, that we didn't go seek it. We had two opportunities to do it, and we didn't do it.
Kathleen?
Okay. I mean, I was just going to say, all this back and forth, I'm not a lawyer. What, that's why I asked the financial questions. Is that, you know, had, I kind of thought about this motion and put in that subject to municipal improvement status. If it was up to me, I wouldn't have said that at all, I felt like we should just be voting on the interim. Like, right now, frankly, I'm really tired of the fact that we're here, I kind of felt the sentiment of the room. I felt it personally the whole entire time. We've spent way too long on this project. We have spent, the, I guess, let me turn it around. We've spent, as a board, we've been really diligent, actually, about going through the ed specs. We then brought it back, I think we actually did, and we should be proud of ourselves, on how we went line by line again, came up with compromises, and, and we should be proud of that. And then I have to just give Laura a little credit, she has been amazing how she keeps us up to date. So if, if we ever miss anything, she's, every building committee, she updates us, she gave us the updated numbers in the summer. I've attended the community forums, I really felt like we have all the information. So this was a little bit of a curveball, this move the goalpost, whatever, whatever sports analogy you want to put out there, this MI thing. So, but it is what it is. And so as a result, I sort of thought if we take this motion, we continue our support, and we modify it with this bit, this is something that we hope we can continue to show sort of, you know, compromise on, if you will.
I, I would like to just update you all to let you know that the building committee met with the town departments on Tuesday. And in lieu of a regular meeting, we met with the town planner, we met with DPW, we met with the tree warden, we met with the fire marshal. And so we will be filing for MI. And our, our goal is to have all the documents to planning and zoning October second. And so we will be on the agenda for the October meeting of planning and zoning. So the, the qualifier subject to MI is important, because we do hope once we are before planning and zoning, that once the, once the MI is granted, the condition will go away and we will be able to commence.
Michael?
Okay, so, so I understand, let me make sure I understand the sequence of events here. So the, we think that CMS is going to be ready to go to P and Z for MI in weeks, weeks' time?
Yes.
All right, so, so the, okay, I, I appreciate, and I understand the frustration in the community. The, Kathleen said, we've been, we've been working this for, for a long time, and there seems to be curveballs and things. I, I'm, I'm, I'm understandably, unfortunately, I'm, I'm a little troubled by, by, by all this and sequence of events. Look, I emailed, and I passed it on to everybody, I emailed the town council yesterday. They, and I asked her, do you think a motion here is in, in order? The town council wrote me back, they, the town council wrote me back, she said, they, the BOE should take this vote after MI approval is granted, which is consistent with a written legal opinion that was issued and has been discussed repeatedly. My understanding is that no one asked town council about, I mean, this is the first we're hearing of, of the motion. No, we, we, we didn't run this wording past council. We could have, they, if we have a town council who told us last week, unfortunately, I'm not happy about it, but told us last week unambiguously, this is what the town charter says. I emailed, I, we got it in writing again this week. We want to try to pass a motion around that, but we don't bother asking the town council what she thinks about it on the biggest capital expenditure in the history of the town. That troubles me.
What you sent to the town council?
Wait, I'm not, I'm not, hold on. Especially if we're, especially if we're talking about a matter of a couple of weeks. And we have another meeting in October. I mean, I know, I want to get this built as soon as everybody, but I feel that we are, I don't want to be in danger of jeopardizing the process, because we're doing something either out of process, out of order, or, and without actually even getting counsel.
But what you sent the town attorney, and she wrote back to you, was the cover sheet, not our motion. So that has no bearing on what we have proposed. And what we have proposed is a motion subject to MI, which I don't think is at odds with the spirit of the charter, because we are giving deference to the process and making sure that it is clear in our language that we are giving deference to MI with this request.
I hear you, but we, we didn't ask council that. We never asked, we didn't ask, we should, because she told us last week.
I can shed some light on this. Absolutely, I spoke to outside counsel about this, about, not about what the town attorney has asked us not to speak to about, about the, the MI interpretation. What I asked outside counsel about is how we should proceed, and he gave us some good advice on how to proceed. And I also spoke extensively to our council about how to proceed, because I value the opinion of our town council as well. I don't pass that off as being in conflict, I, I feel I'm very happy to hear their opinion. Our town council, as, as been mentioned already, said that if we make a motion, it might be considered out of order. Thank you for that, I don't want to make a motion that's out of order. And I said, what if we put a stipulation on it? And this is prior to me hearing the motion this. And this is prior to me hearing the motion this evening for the first time. I've never heard this before, but I did ask that question about a, a subject to motion. And she said, well, it's, it's, it's not necessarily out of order. She feels that if it's determined to be out of order, it's less likely subject to than it would be if, and it's not 100% that it's out of order if we make the motion in itself as a Board of Education. So in my opinion, and there'll be further discussion as well, but in my opinion, and I have a few other things to say, that, that the motion is ripe. It's time to move this forward. It's absolutely 100%. And let me give a little history, a little story. I, I thought about this. I've spent almost 200 meetings on this. Back when, when Kathleen took the lead at the start, she ran a bunch of meetings. It was her show. And I was involved in listening because there's one thing I can contribute to the board, and that's construction experience. I've been in the business for 40 years and I continue, I am still in the business. So I have a unique understanding to construction. So I felt, hey, I can add a little more to this. So I paid a lot of attention to Kathleen's lead. And then during her lead on this, she passed the lead off to Laura. And Laura and I speak a couple of times a day, right? So, and so we speak about that and I participate and attend many of your meetings. And, and also speak and meet at least once a week and speak many times to the chairman of your building committee. And we also meet with the, with the chairman of the BET on a regular basis, in person, and then phone calls as well to follow. I had the privilege and lucky opportunity to meet with many of the teachers in the planning process of the, of both the ed specs and the building committee. I also met with many of the teachers sitting in the rooms with things you'd stick on the wall and write stuff down. So literally, as I reflected, it was truly hundreds of meetings which I attended on this school, all right? I have unique knowledge to this process, both intrinsically in my own personal knowledge and the amount of time I spent on this. My term runs out shortly. I'm not letting this go by without me voting in favor of this thing. I'm absolutely 100%. If this is turned over because it's out of order, I'm going to call a special meeting and vote again. If it's, if, if the special meeting's turned over, I'm going to wait for a regular scheduled meeting. I will continue to push forward to support Central Middle School because I personally have the most knowledge on this process with all the different concepts combined in the seat I sit in. So when people come in and tell me they heard this, they hear that, they heard this. I have the frontline information with all the chairs and all the people involved in this. I understand this process. This is the correct pricing in this marketplace for this building. This building should be built immediately and there is no reason other than made up reasons that the team's model doesn't exist. It's not real. There is a, there's a building in another part of the state that's built for half that amount. Those things, if you hear them from people, the word supersize, if you hear that from people, it is made up. They are not telling you the truth. This building is being, the ed specs are being met. They're building to the educational needs of our students.
Bravo.
Somebody want to call the question or even want to talk about?
Doug, can I get in line at least?
I'm sorry, Cody. I haven't been looking for you to, of course you can.
Hello from London. It's, so, yeah, I just, I've been thinking a lot about this one. The, the, sorry, I'm a little tired. I think two products of government projects are wasted time and wasted money. And you always have kind of a balancing act between the two. And I think here, you know, like reasonable people could disagree. I think there's not an egregious amount of waste here, but it's already been litigated. We did all the votes on the ed specs and I was part of losing votes on a number of those, you know, like 50 square feet of classroom, things like that. And so I think that's the way, I think the kind of right approach here is those votes were taken. You know, someone like me who supports doing a new central, it's like, okay, well, I prefer to have a new central with some waste over a, no central at all and, and, you know, made the effort to reduce the waste and fine, that's what it is. I think the, Mike, all the points you were making, I'm sympathetic to. But I think when you think about the, the wasted time aspect of these projects, the weather, like, I don't even know what it means to be out of order, but I, I generally find that procedural arguments are most often disingenuous and they're just used when they're convenient. And I don't want to kind of, it, it feels like if we want a new central, there's good, if someone's going to vote against it, they should vote against it because they think it's too wasteful. But I think the procedural stuff, especially with the way that the motion's been addressed, makes sense to me. And it's like if someone comes along and says, oh, that's not, you didn't follow the right procedure or whatever. Okay, but then I think we're just becoming part of the problem of slowing things down. And this stuff already goes so slow because there's way too many people involved and way too many committees and agencies. So my, where I ended up on this is to vote in favor of it. Just because I think the, whatever wasted money is going to be wasted, you know, and that's been decided. And it's just, are we going to be a part of having more wasted time around the project or not? And I'd prefer to reduce the wasted time. And I wouldn't fault the BET for sending it back. And I think we did a disservice to the project by kind of increasing the risk that it would get sent back because I think they'd be on good ground to say, you know, there's certain things that can be trimmed out of here. And I think people should, you know, I listened to a lot of the parents speak. And I think that whenever you hear someone present something as like, you know, we're pro schools and the people that disagree with me are anti schools. I don't think there's a lot of, you know, it's not too clever to just be arguing against a straw man. It's more impressive when people can effectively articulate what the, you know, other view actually is. Is other people who have, you know, opposing views, if they'd agree with how it's characterized. But for me, I think this ends up with a, you know, that we should drop, I don't think we should waste time on the procedure stuff. Because I think that all of us are in favor of the school moving forward. We have reasonable disagreements about the scope of the school, but those have already been dealt with. So it's, you know, I think, well, that's, I just wanted to lay out my thinking on that and where, that's why I'll be voting in favor of it.
Anybody else? Karen?
So I have a, sorry, Cody, procedural type of question. So Mike, you had mentioned that you guys are bringing MI forward for Old Greenwich to PNZ for their October meeting. Which meeting?
The first one.
And on October 3rd?
Yeah.
So it makes the most sense for us to be able to do this if, and to discuss and vote on the motion that was made on the off chance that, you know, you're, sorry, Central is putting forward all of their information and should have that into PNZ shortly as well for approval for MI. They can discuss both on the October 3rd date. If we wait and push this even further down the road, it'll be our October 5th meeting, which is the next meeting we have. And we will miss the opportunity to have it go forward to PNZ then. We will miss deadlines to get it to BET and RTM to vote on, to make this expeditiously done, even though it's been slowed up before. And as we've heard, every day we go past, waiting and waiting, is $13,000 more. Every month is, I don't even remember the exact figure, $365,000. So while we may not love the cost currently, every day we increase that cost and reduce the amount we might actually get back from the state, it just makes the most sense. We have put in a provision that, you know, we're not going to ask for this until we get MI status. But the moment that happens, this can immediately go to the other town bodies. That's, you know, the way I see it. And I, and I honestly, we've, we've had this information for long enough. And the town and our students deserve our support to give them what they need.
I just want to correct the timeline, Karen. Old Greenwich and CMS will not be heard at the same meeting by PNZ. There will be different meetings.
Well, I would assume that would be, once you put the information in, isn't it based on PNZ putting it on their calendar?
We're going to be the second meeting.
Okay, alrighty then.
Anybody else?
I'm happy to call the question, unless Karen has.
Wait, Joe, I, I just put, I did my little hand raising thing. This is sort of a side note, but.
Well, Karen had her hand up first.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
It's okay, Cody, go ahead.
Cody, then Karen will comment. I don't.
I just, I can't resist making a comment on this and I'm, you already heard how I'm voting on it. But the escalation cost is such an intellectually dishonest argument because it presupposes that people can predict the price of lumber, the price of steel and other things like that. Which, by the way, lumber and steel are both down probably approximately 15 to 20% in the last year. People don't have a crystal ball and it totally ignores the fact that the capital comes with a cost, whether the town borrows it or it comes out of people's pocketbooks and they lose that. So I just, the escalation cost thing, every time someone makes that argument, it makes me cringe because it's not intellectually honest. And I just had to, and Karen, I, I'm not saying you aren't being intellectually honest because you're taking what the numbers that people are giving us. But when I asked them for the backup of how they were forecasting it, they couldn't provide it. I would just love it if we moved away from.
Just as an aside, I happily suggest that you go back and look at the notes and the meetings that we've had with Turner Construction, who's, are probably some of the foremost experts in this field. They've been doing this for decades. And when we did Glenville School with them, they were literally on time, on budget to the T almost, to the penny.
No, no, it's fine. I just don't think they can predict.
So my point is if they give me that information, I, I will go with that. That's all.
Yeah, they just, they ignore a capital cost, that there's a cost of capital and they ignore, and they don't, can't predict the future. That's my only point.
It's very interesting, but I'm going to suggest we move on.
Yeah.
Karen?
No, I just had, I just had one comment. Look, I've, I've had three children, two children go through CMS. And I have a current child at CMS. And for those of you who've known my voting record, I've been against the size of the school from the very beginning because I think we can build a very amazing school, but it needs to be right sized based upon the num, the enrollment and what we need. And I look at this as a different way. I look at the fact that if we could have found a way to save, to right size the school and save $10 million, I look at that as the value of 10 teachers for a decade, which is two generations of students that could come through here. And as far as I know, is that children don't learn by just the beauty of the building, but rather the people that you put in front of the building to teach them. And I'd rather have the ability to say, I want to build a great school, but I want to right size it. But I want to put the best educators in front of them in order to learn. Because my, as far as I know, no child learns by osmosis, but rather by the valued educator you put before them. I'd rather spend, put more money there and find a way to do it, since we're always looking for money in this district. So I'm going to vote against this, not on the procedural component because I view the way we've phrased this as probably a right way to get around it. And as Joe has said, he's talked around it, talked to our council in order to figure that out. But I'm a no, because I've been a no on the size and the scope. And I know we've gone through the process, but I'm sticking to where I think that we should be spending more of our money. We could have built a better sized school and put more money towards the teachers that stand in the front of the classroom, that educate our students, that are standing here on a regular basis, telling all the great things that our students are doing. And it wasn't because of the building, it was because of the teachers in front of them.
I will call the question, but first I'll say, Karen, if I can summarize a little bit. You're voting yes on Central, but no on the size. So you're in favor of Central Middle School, just not on the.
I've always been in favor of Central Middle School and putting a school in front of them. It's just, it's purely the size. And I've said the same comments for the last two years and I haven't wavered in them. And I truly believe that we should be putting our money to the teachers who stand in front and still provide a great school. It's the scope of the project and that's always been my issue.
Perfect. Now you, and you are, we're all for a new Central Middle School. But also call the question and all in favor, please put your hand up. What do we have? Cody's up? Six? Six, all against? One and an abstention, one. Okay, we, motion passes. The Greenwich Together Survey Updated Discussion Item. Dr. H, can you please join us and discuss that discussion item?
Yeah, come on up. So if you remember, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so if you remember last spring, we were up here talking about the Greenwich Together Survey. And one of the requests says, was that the results of the survey be presented to the board? So this is a preview. The, the information's going out to the community next month. So you guys get it firsthand and before everybody else. But we want to make sure that you have that information and the opportunity to ask questions about the results of the survey. So the survey you have is from the students who participated in grade six through 12 throughout the community. So not just Greenwich Public Schools, but also the other schools. I was really happy to hear little talk about it and, you know, others talk about having listened to the presentation. I think the information can give us a lot of things to focus on for our students. But we do have the folks here who did the survey so they can talk a little bit more specific and answer any of your questions.
Karen?
First of all, I just wanted to thank, thank you guys for continuing to push forward to get this information from students throughout the entire town of Greenwich. This is something I know that has been used multiple times in the past. We're required to do it every few years in order to continue getting, it's a grant that's funded to help find ways to support students. In, you know, combating some of the issues that are asked about in this survey. And it's, it's gone, you know, I'm sure you guys can speak about some of the programs that have been put through in the town for public and private students that have really greatly supported our students in the past and will continue to do so in the future. I have, well, simply two questions because I really did not have as much time as I would have liked to delve into because it was chock full and meaty. So I may send some questions later. But one, I did notice that, I didn't see Sacred Heart noted. So did they opt out?
Yes.
Okay, and so that was question one. There were a few other smaller private schools, but I assume they also opted out. Okay. And then the second question then is, is, you know, do you have thoughts on what programs you might want to bring in or fund with the grant that this helps us get the funds from? I don't know if you want to share some of those or if you want to wait. That's, I'd love to hear a little bit about that.
Yeah, that's fine. So some of the programs that we already have started thinking about are, so you can see some of the data really focused on social media since that has been a, a big theme with parents and our youth. So one of the things that we are bringing soon to Greenwich is a film called Screenagers Under the Influence. So that is a film that speaks about both substance use and the, the cell phone, right? You know, where, where kids are accessing it and how it plays into the cell phone usage. So we will be doing that in a panel to follow along in November after our community presentation. So everybody gets a sense of what the data looks like and that will be to follow. And any other ones that you can think of?
Oh, yes. We are also, well, this is, we actually started it based off of our other survey results. But to raise more awareness around mental health in the community, we started a yellow tool project. So if you've seen, we have little gardens all throughout Greenwich with little signs, yeah, called Hope Gardens. And those are to raise awareness. So we've done the yellow tool planning, which we do in October, which will hop coming up, October 14th, where we get the community together, volunteers come out, we talk about the purpose of doing the planning. We have youth speak about their experience and why we're out here doing this. And it's a great way for people to start talking about it and get aware of the resources and ways that we can help our youth in the community. And then in the spring, we had our Hope Day, which was full of mental health resources. And we had people come out in the community. We had youth present. And it's a great way for them to see what, what are the resources, get together and also just increase the hope, right, in the community. So.
Well, just as an aside, I, I would be happy to continue a discussion on ways we can do that. And I would love to suggest, you know, working with, I know the First Selectment's Youth Commission can help spread the word. We have a lot of incredible student clubs at the high school. And I know we'll be talking a little bit about this in the next presentation and the goals. But we have some, the Wellness Center at the high school with a lot of our community partners. And I think it's another great way for us to sort of connect with you to help support some of those initiatives and ways to support our own students. So I'd be, I'd love to hear a little bit more, not, not tonight, but going forward.
And we actually work very closely with the Youth Commission and Greenwich High School Outreach Club. So we're all in collaboration.
That's awesome. Thanks.
Michael?
Oh, yeah, if anyone's interested.
Dire need of all.
October fourteenth.
Yes.
Tool of planting.
Absolutely. Two things. So thank you for the three things actually. So thanks for, I think the video was really helpful here because as extensive as this fifty-eight page report is, people will, the, the video really hits home in a much more digestible way and we really appreciate it.
And that was thanks to our evaluator.
The, the GEA hit the same, mentioned the same number that I thought was most sobering, which was the twenty-six percent in the high school of high school age population that said, did you ever, ever feel so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row? You stopped doing some unusual activities. Do we have any sense? I couldn't find it. Do we have any sense how that number has changed over time? If it was twenty-six percent now?
We haven't asked it that way in the past, so it's hard to compare. Because we, we asked it very specifically this time to go toward more diagnosis than just sort of a feeling of anxiety or loneliness. So it is hard to compare with the other survey results. We can, you know, and other communities have used this same tool. So once their survey results are out, we can sort of look at. But you know, there's a mental health crisis across the country. So.
And then the, I guess it was a little disappointing to see the response rates in twelfth grade, you know. Right. Given, given that those would be the kids who had the full benefit of any SEL programs and things like that. What were the challenges there?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think historically, one of the challenges that we hear from the schools is that the twelfth graders kind of have the option, well, not the option, but they.
They opt out themselves.
Yes.
Was it given at the end, was it given in the spring?
Say, when was it given to students?
I was gonna say, maybe on the internships.
No, they were still in school. Yeah.
Their internships, no, but it was February.
Yeah.
We had ninety percent response rate in ninth grade, thirty-seven percent in twelfth grade. So that's, that's something that.
Yeah, I think when they're younger, it's easier for a teacher to be like, oh, here's the survey, you know, fill it out and then.
No, I hear you. And it's not your issue, but if we're prioritizing social emotional health and support and in the expense of this crisis, we can't just say, oh, twelfth graders are busy, things like that. I think it's incumbent on us as a district to, to get that data.
No, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we need to continue brainstorming how we can get them more engaged in the survey.
Christina?
Thank you, guys. This is, I think, really good information. This is kind of more for Stacy and Tony. Do you guys annually look, I mean, like kind of what are we doing? You know, are there funds, you know, as we go into our operating budget for next year, you know, kind of programs that we could put into place, you know, in addition to help address some of these issues? I don't know if that's something that's in the works. And if it is, if you could just speak briefly to it, that'd be great to hear.
Stacy, I might just, we were talking about the budget this morning. And I think, I think one of the challenges we have is it's, and you'll see that reflected in my goals is communicating what we actually have. So many of our families still, it's such a big high school, we have so many resources and they just don't always know what's really available. And so we're working on that this year from a communication standpoint, but Stacy, feel free to add to that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We have, we have quite a few resources, starting at second step in the elementary and middle school. And then at the high school, we have the access with community agencies as well as looking at PBIS. So there is a PBIS committee at the high school that does meet. And Dr. Fabian and Alina, they are part of that team, always looking at how we can incorporate more SEL. I know that the school counselors are looking at part of that as their program. So we actually have a lot going on and I agree with Dr. Jones. And it's like, how do we communicate out all that we do? Because it's so much and it, and as you get older, it gets a little bit more targeted. As opposed to at the elementary level, it's very general. Like how, how, how are you nice to all of the students in the class? Becomes a little bit more targeted at the high school level of, okay, if this is how you're feeling about this, this is where this support is. But if you're having an issue with this, this is a different kind of support.
Anybody else? Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming. Yes, you did. We didn't scare you off. Congratulations. Summer School Executive Summary, Anne? Is that you? Will you join us and give us your summary?
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be very brief because of the hour of the night. So summer school this summer, I, first I'd like to thank Tara Fogel, Matt Hardigan and Anna Maria McCarthy, Simonelli, for really having a great summer school experience for our students and families this past summer. And just as a side note, Anna Maria got married the day after summer school ended. So you can see how dedicated our, our staff is. So and Tara had a baby. Exactly. So you know, we have very, very dedicated staff. So just very quickly, summer school was July third to August fourth. We had tutoring this summer, which was one of the most popular things for families. We had sixty-seven students who participated in tutoring for a half an hour for a few times a week, or maybe twice a week, or three times a week, whatever worked for them. And then we had one hundred and sixty-six students in twenty-seven classes from pre-K to grade eight. We had five classes for six through eight middle school bridge classes. And they had sixty-six students in those classes. For our high school students, we had seventy-six students who took either X credit recovery or acceleration courses. And then for E S Y, extended school year, we had one hundred and twenty-seven students participate from elementary school all the way to our post-high school Community Connections Program. So that is our quick overview of that. And then our cost, which I have right here was. No, it wasn't a billion dollars. Actually, the cost went down this year because we had fewer students. So the total cost for staff was six hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. And then we had transportation on top of that, which was three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and fifty-three cents, fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. So that's my quick overview of summer school. And if you have any questions, I do have Anna Maria and Matt on, on a call. And there they are. And they did a fabulous job.
Any questions about summer school? Laura?
So I loved your tutoring option. Would there be any consideration to having sort of an extended time period, say an hour in the morning? For?
That's something that we can talk about. We have not had an opportunity to get together as a team after summer school ended because of Anna Maria and Tara. But no, I'm kidding. We just haven't had the time to do that. And when everybody comes back, we'll talk about it. And the tutoring was actually Dr. Jones's idea. So you know, she is pretty good.
It was very well done.
Karen?
Thank you.
I think I may ask a similar question every year, but I really would love to get an idea. You know, we invite a lot of students who need added support every year and they were, while a lot of students did attend, there's still a significant portion that have not. Do we ever reach out to find out why they're not accepting like our invitation? Are they taking courses elsewhere, getting support somewhere else? Or have they gotten the invite too late and already made summer plans? Or some students, especially the younger ones, may need a break during the summer? Do we, do we have any?
It's interesting. Dr. Jones and I talked about that today. We really feel that since COVID, we have had a lower attendance every year. And I think it's just that people really want their children to be able to experience the things that they couldn't experience when we were in COVID. So I think that's really what the case is. And some people have their kids go for a couple of days and then they don't go anymore. So it's really a parental choice.
So, well, I still have a follow-up of that. So you know, I, I had sent a whole bunch of questions in advance and I'm happy to circulate those answers to, to the rest of the board. You know, I, I was saying, I was not unfortunately overly impressed in some regards with the attendance figure. So I know we've done a, we did a summer school review of the program a few years back. I have the date somewhere here, but I don't know if that's something that you guys are considering. I think the tutoring option has become a really wonderful resource for families. I know in the years past, we said, well, some students didn't want to be there all day. Can we, if they just need English help or reading or math, could they just do that? So I think that tutoring option's fantastic. So I, you know, I'm hoping that we can take sort of a little bit of a deeper dive, especially since I know we talked about like the number of students that didn't show up for the whole course or didn't complete it. You know, we're spending a lot of time and money and want to support our students in the best way possible. So I just thought maybe that's an opportunity for us to sort of look into how to best serve those students during the summer, so they don't have the summer slide and provide whatever else they might need. And I don't know if we give a survey to parents who has signed up for the course and whether they attended or students attended or didn't, to just sort of get feedback, but I'd love to, to sort of delve into that at some point because it's really a wasted opportunity if we provide the service and then the students don't show up. So I'm hoping we can delve deeper because.
One thing is that the site supervisors and the staff at the both sites do make phone calls home to find out where the children are and why they're not there. So we can look into that a little bit more too. Let's see what we can come up with.
Thanks.
Christina?
Just kind of following up that a little bit. Because the tutoring is so popular and successful and it seems like it's probably early in the day, doesn't inhibit on today. Perhaps something to think about is maybe expanding the tutoring as, you know, to capture some of the students who might not otherwise come. I just, it seems like it's, this is the second year we've done it, or is it second or the third? Second year. And it was successful and now it's even more successful, but clearly the time of day is relevant. So that would just be a suggestion to look at expanding it.
Michael?
Yeah, I won't repeat what, what others said. The, but it's great. I mean, I'm all about tutoring. The, and I think that's going to be a conversation when we get the achievement report in a couple of weeks. One thing that I'm wondering about, so we have a board goal around aligning as many, our presentation itself towards the, around the strategic plan. And obviously we have a strategic plan goal around reading levels, right? And getting to the grade level. So I wonder when we see slides around, which we see progress, but I always worry about raw scores and things like that. And if that gives enough connection to what were the context, how much progress we're actually making here. So is that like when we have the students that moved up on so much on the raw score, does that mean they've made grade level? They've got that much closer to grade level? I wonder if presenting this kind of number, numbers in more, in that kind of more clear, clear context, it would be more helpful in keeping us all focused on, on the goals of the plan.
I know that Kim Palladino really looked at making sure that the materials that we used for reading were really specific so that they could really support filling in the gaps for the students that needed it. So I can get back to you with that and have a conversation with her and let you know. Okay? Thank you.
Karen?
Is it too early to tell whether or not there was a, where we would see a difference between the summer school program that we ran this year versus the last two years where we had it, you know, at school based, right? Because we couldn't do that this year because we didn't have enough teachers and we also had some building issues. So is it too early to tell whether or not we had any greater success in the last two years when it was, we kept kids at their same building?
I think the only thing we would be able to compare would be the attendance. Because it's a different program this year. So I can look into that.
Okay. The other comment that I would make, and I apologize, I was telling my kids to go to bed. The other comment that I would make is on the tutoring factor. If we could build in more of, so I have personal experience with the tutoring element over the course of the summer in a small group setting. And I think that that has a true impact. And I would argue that that impact is probably greater than we would see with respect to schools, you know, having their, the kids in the same school, because I do think regardless of the teacher, whether it's the teacher that they know versus when they don't know, that small group setting, I think would have a greater impact particularly on the reading component, which I probably would see it more greater there. So if we could find a way, and I don't know how, obviously that's going to increase the cost as does everything in life, but I think that because we're trying to reach over the course of the summer, those that are truly challenged in both reading and math. If we could find a way to implement that small group component, I think we'll find greater success there.
Seeing no more hands, can you tell us about the social studies book?
Actually, I have Lucy Areco on to talk about the social studies book. And the great committee that we had last year to look at all these books. So Lucy, are you ready?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So last spring, we had a textbook committee made up of students, teachers, Dr. Carabilla was on the committee, as was Christina Downey. We looked at two textbooks for our AP government course, specifically the second half of the AP government course. In the fall, we teach AP United States Government. In the spring, it's AP Comparative Government and Politics. So we are recommending a book by Karen Waples called Comparative Government for the AP Course. The, the committee felt like this book was especially aligned to the college board curriculum. The current book that they are using is no longer aligned since the changes. The course is now thematic as opposed to organized by nation. And the Karen Waples book is also thematic.
I think one of the best things about the committee was the student feedback. And they really like this particular author and they liked the way the book was organized. And they felt that it gave them a lot of support. And I see Christina shaking her head too.
I had, I had never sat on a textbook committee and it was very interesting for me personally, but that, and this is a kind of an interesting course anyway. You know, I don't know if anybody's kids have taken comparative, but it's about these themes versus countries. So this new textbook really aligns on the concept and then brings the different countries in. And Lucy, I think it was unanimous. Everyone felt that this was a vastly, of the two choices, because there aren't that many choices, because it's kind of a niche sort of AP course that's not taught a lot of places. There weren't, you know, twenty books to choose from. There were only a few, but I think we universally felt this one was far and away the best one. And it also included our history teacher who just, Mrs. Boye, who was recognized earlier this evening, was also on the committee.
Yes, that's all true. There definitely was a consensus and there aren't many textbooks out there for this course.
Kathleen? So you go next, Cody. Kathleen's going now.
Go ahead, Cody.
I was just gonna say, and I, I sent, I'd sent you an email. Thanks for responding. The, I just spent some time earlier today looking at reviews. There's no reviews for this book on Amazon, but there's reviews of the other, of other textbooks that this author has done for other, like US history or AP Gov or something. And there was some slightly weird stuff in those, like the, I wanted to just get a copy of it. I'm trying to find a way to order one. I wanted to check, like she had a, there were a number of Amazon reviews criticizing one of her books because she had a chart that put Hitler, Stalin and Ted Cruz and Donald Trump on the same level of authoritarianism. And some other weird things like that.
Hitler, Stalin and Ted Cruz and Donald Trump on the same level of authoritarianism and some other weird things like that. And so, you know, I wanted to just double click into this textbook. I've actually did comparative gov at the high school when, before the class was offered, I just bought a textbook and self-taught it. So I like that. It's a very great class. But, and I know there's a very limited choice of textbooks there, but given that that's something that the authors produced, I wanted to double check what, what content is in this.
So I can, Dr. Carabilla mentioned to me that you're looking for the book and I can get an ebook to you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
Kathleen.
Okay. So I'm going to selfishly ask, since I have a child currently enrolled in this curriculum. What are we doing for the kids this year? Like, is he going to be prepared for the AP?
He will be getting, if you approve this.
Oh, it's for this year.
At our next meeting, then we will order it and it will be here for January.
Oh, oh gosh, I thought that we were doing it for extras. Fine. Let's go. Okay. Keep going.
Karen.
Selfishly, I also have a student that's taking this course and I had the pleasure of speaking with one of the teachers who was not on the committee at back to school night last night, as I was luckily the only senior parent there in the class and got his full feedback as somebody I, who has taught my other children in classes. And so I, full respect and they, you know, the sooner we can approve this and move it forward, the sooner he'll have, you know, our teachers will have the opportunity to prep themselves on, with use of this particular book. So that our students can access the information in a proper manner to succeed and do really well on the AP. Which is, you know, moves really quickly and our AP scores this year in particular were really stellar. I'd love to be able to see them continue to rise next year and give the students an opportunity to actually study the subject with, in the way it's intended to be studied.
Karen.
I like Cody would also like a link to the ebook if it would be, if that could be provided.
We'll check with the, with the publisher and see if they can send us that link. Because that's what we used when we were doing the book review.
Thanks. And then the other question is, I'm really glad to see that it offers a read aloud option, which I think is great. The one question I have on the read aloud option, does it allow the students to change the speed at which it's read?
I don't remember exactly, but I think it did because I know that the kids could make the font bigger or smaller. They could do a lot of things with it to redo it. So I believe it is.
Okay.
Dr. H.
I was gonna say, I do all my reading on the read aloud thing and I usually have it the fastest possible speed. I've never found anything that couldn't speed up. So.
Seeing nothing else, I'm going to hand it over to Karen. Karen, you want to run this discussion?
Sure. Unless there's anything else you want to say about the textbook.
No, but you have to have two reads.
Oh, I know. I'm not, we're not, we're not voting on it tonight. This was not an action item. No, we, he was, Dr., I'm sorry, Joe was suggesting we move on to the next.
Oh, absolutely. I got it.
No, I was looking at Dr. Carabilla and saying, doctor, because next person up is our, is for special education action plan. So if Dr. Heil, Ilegenthaler, did I get it right this time? Heiligenthaler?
Dang it.
I do. Well, that's what happened. The last time I didn't, and then I got, you know, yelled at. So I would just like to invite Dr. H up then for special education action plan update.
So I submitted the PowerPoint in the recording last week. I hope you all got a chance to watch it. I'm pleased to say that we're moving through the action plan and we're making great progress on that. And everything that hasn't been completed is in the works. So we anticipate that that will keep on moving, keep on going forward. And then also in the presentation, we included some just general information about some of the programs that we have. Based on some of the comments from you as the board last spring, specifically targeting and providing information about those. So any questions?
Me, I'm running the discussion. So I, that means I, I have a lot of comments slash questions, but I'll just basically say, first of all, I'm really just so excited to hear we're finally getting to focus on the creation of a twice exceptional handbook, something I've been advocating for like four, for about 15 plus years. So I will happily step forward to help review and share comments once you get to that point. I'm very excited and add input. I said, I said, if wanted.
Of course.
Anyway. So I have a few questions and I guess I'll start with one of the SESS priorities was about professional development to support and cultivate a responsive environment for the needs of our students. So I just sort of wanted to learn, and you may not be able to tell us all tonight about some of those professional develop opportunities we're offering to educators for gen ed and special education teachers. I know some of our professional development is required and some comes in a lovely menu for teachers to have an option of what they take. But I know we've made a lot of changes in the past year or two, and I know sometimes it takes more than a professional development session or two or three to sort of truly understand some of the changes and things that they're being putting into practice in their classrooms. So I'm just wanting to see, you know, if there's what sort of oversight we have for our teachers, if we're checking in to see if the changes are being implemented properly, or if they might need added support or follow up training, once they've started to implement some of the changes within their classroom, you know, so we can sort of do a deeper dive, once things are put into practice for teachers that would like to. Are we able to do that? Are we getting feedback and who's overseeing?
Yes, we are. And so for the different professional development, so let's, I'll just pick reading as one. So in addition to the trainings that have been provided, and that's something that we've been doing for the last two or three years. So we started two years ago with the visualize, visualize verbalize, say I'm having trouble with that program and trying to work with implementation and then slowly with Wilson. And then we've purchased materials for additional reading programs, Inspire and PAF for grades K through eight. But we also have our reading lab teacher. So in addition to that, we have an ongoing, we have, we have somebody who can go and, and help teachers who might be struggling with it, who might not be proficient. In addition to that, over our entire reading program, we have one of our coordinators, Teresa Fox, is the assigned administrator over that reading. And so part of that is even tying into what Kim Palladino does in the general education. So we're really looking at tiers of support and supervision so that we have somebody monitoring that on an ongoing basis. So it's not like, here you go. Good luck. It really is, how do we, you know, provide that support, provide the ongoing support for somebody who's struggling? I did, was on a call earlier today with one of the assistant principals from a school that said that her staff was just so happy with all of the materials that they got. And they are just so excited to actually have things. Many people have been trained over the years, even prior to my tenure, but didn't get the materials to implement. So we have a lot of excitement about getting some of those materials. So for all the professional development is really tied, is really tightly tied together with a supervision and implementation plan so that it's not, please just go and then, and hope for the best. It really is the follow up and it's all tied together. Sorry, that's probably a longer answer than.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. I just, you know, I just know how, you know, I just know how, how difficult it is to sort of take something that's new and put it in practice. And if somebody's not, you know, there to sort of help and support along the way, you know, you sometimes to, you know, struggle a little when you're, we're trying something new out. So I just wanted to make sure. I guess, you know, some of the, one of the other questions, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit quickly to the wellness center at the high school. When we first opened that, I know it was right when Dr. Jones came and I was truly impressed. The intentions, the initial implementation, but it sounds from your presentation that the the programming there has changed somewhat. I know we, and we just were talking about this when, with the run it together survey, there's some incredible support options there. But there's very, and Dr. Jones was mentioning this earlier too, but there's very little of any information on the website or shared with students or parents as to the support options that are available. I know the STARS program is a perfect example. There's not a single mention of it anywhere on the GPS or GHS website. It's for students, you know, with needs for executive functioning skills and, you know, as a parent of a student with, with some of those needs, I didn't even know it existed. So I want to make it easier for parents and students that have these needs to access the information, even though it's there, available for them. So I'd really love to make sure we're sort of focused on, on doing that. You know, so if we can just make sure we update the website and share information about what's available in the wellness center and the programs there. I think it would be really an incredible opportunity for us and for our students for their achievement. So I was just sort of curious, like how many students really access the wellness center? You know, and what sort of the smaller targeted classes you are now offering there through there? Because I didn't know we were doing classes in there specifically.
So there are, in the wellness center, so we restructured the supervision of the wellness center. Before, and I think one of the challenges was we had like a special ed side and a gen ed side and but so many things within the wellness center kind of fell in. I always described it as a Venn diagram, like kind of fell in that, that middle piece. So Tom Pereira is now over the entire wellness center to really help provide the consistency across all of the classes. So there are special education classes that are specifically for special education students that an IEP is placing them in those classes. So they're highly structured and they're across content areas for those students. In addition, we have general education teachers that also teach classes down there that are a combination of gen ed and special education students. And so those are students that don't need a therapeutic special ed teacher, but they do need that smaller, that smaller class. And so Tom is now supervising that continuum through the gen ed and the special ed to, to provide that support as well as liaising with our community agencies so that we have that comprehensive wraparound. We also have a school psychologist and a social worker that are down there in the wellness center who are there for everybody. So kind of making that like there for all the students that, that have access to that. And then we have the ESS program, the Effective School Solutions, which is also located in the wellness center, but is a support for students not just in the wellness center, but who are out in the house, the houses and both general ed and special ed. So there's a lot of different supports as well as some community agencies. So it's trying to tie all that together in a meaningful way. And I think that when Tom came on board, we had a lot of agencies and a lot was virtual and we were coming off of COVID and now it's trying to make it more structured. How are students accessing that? And how are we setting that up so that people know what they can access? Like, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, there was like a flyer that had QR codes so that students could, you know, look at what, you know, what was available. But I, I don't think that, that didn't work so well. I mean, the intent was there, but it really is a focus this year of how can we get that information out?
Yeah. I, I mean, not for tonight, but I really would love to get a little understanding of, you know, who refers students to use some of the programs there, what triggers those recommendations, recommendations? And what are the criteria for entrance versus exit? You know, as long as we're supporting students before they're reaching the levels of getting Ds or Fs, I think we're doing our job properly. We want to make sure we, we have that safety net. I know we had, I had like two more questions, but I can defer if somebody else has one. But the one comment I would make before I ask my other questions, and I'll let others go is, you know, with CAC, we're really gaining traction with them. They've really come together. They do an incredible amount of work. And I know this particular report is focused on the recommendations from the PCG audit and we're moving ahead strongly with that. And we've now gotten two end of the year reports from CAC and included in that are some of their recommendations and suggestions. And since that membership is inclusive of so many vested stakeholders from various backgrounds, they dedicate a lot of time and energy to, to working with us to, to help educate and support parents and, you know, the board. I'd love to understand how we're going to address those concerns and suggestions going forward, because I think we, we do sort of owe it to them to do that. And again, that doesn't have to be a discussion necessarily for tonight, but I would love to have that discussion.
Absolutely. And I'm back in November. So I can include that. Did you want to say something, Dr.?
Yeah, let me just add to that because I think you'll see even on the superintendent goals that between now and June of 24, at the end of the year. And Dr. Carabilla has been tasked to do basically kind of an audit of the wellness center. She's doing onsite visits. We're, we're doing all of that work, but community connections, the wellness center. What am I forgetting?
Windrose.
Thank you. Windrose. We're really looking at so that we can report to the board so that you'll better understand those programs. And we have been doing a lot of work with, with all of those programs. So we're excited to share that with you this year.
So I guess that would just, we used to get, and I'd love to, if we could do that, then, you know, it won't be November, but I think it ties into the programs you're going to be doing a review on. In, in prior years, we used to get a report in March, which would hit information on how many students were referred. It's information that we have to, are required to give to the state. It was a yearly report every March on the special education program. And I'd really love to see if we can bring those back as well. I guess it was a special education monitoring report for people personnel programs and support. It just gives us an opportunity to really see how we're meeting the needs and students in a hundred different ways. So I'd love to have an opportunity to discuss bringing those back as well, because we're coming to the hopefully end of implementing the recommendations from the audit.
Absolutely.
Christina, I'm going to call on you next, but if we can be mindful of the hour.
A hundred percent. I, because my question.
Words?
Yes.
And target them a little bit.
Short word. Because Karen's last point was exactly where I was going to go with just the timetable to implement. I know we're making progress and I think we originally, did we say a three year or a three to five year? If you could refresh us on implementing all the action steps we wanted to take. That was number one. And my other question was just, and it could be tonight or it could be in November, about our unique learner program. Just kind of an update on that.
So the action plan is through a year from now, so September of 2024. Because that's a lot when we get some of that, well, when we should get the state information. I'll say that because I'm still waiting on last year's information of the state. So we should have that to be able to update. I do anticipate that we will have met all, all of the 28 recommendations. There might be a little piece here and there, but we have either met 16 of the 28 and the others are like partially implemented or they're consistently, but not fully. Like there's that like, how do we ingrain it as part of the culture? So I, I do think that we're on the way to do that. For our unique learner, this is our second year with the program. Our attendance has, has increased for the number of students. And it really is focusing for, we, we had parents who after the first year have come from other neighborhood schools into the program, which is really great and they're, they're doing good. And it's, it's nice to see a sense of community for the students that COSCOB has created for that classroom. I would really like to give Carrie a shout out for, you know, the support of having that classroom and ensuring that the students are seen as other members of the school, even though their homeschool might be something different.
Okay. Michael?
I'm aware of the, the hour, the, so if I'm piling on Stacy, when we think about future reports and we consider CAC recommendations and the review of the audit, repeating myself, but I do think we need to also, when thinking about all of these presentations, consider our new goals here around the strategic plan, particularly around the goal number five, about all students being known well. As we're thinking about wellness center, these other things, and we want to track that data. We need to, we need to think about how all this work is, is supporting those goals. I think that's, that's important for, for us, for us to hear. I do want to ask you specifically about community connections, because I know that it was in, it was in the slide deck here. I know, you know, we've gotten a lot of questions over the last six months from, from, from parents in that program, some of our most needy students in the, in the district. So could you talk a little bit about the, how the, how the programs evolved, the, and, and things this summer? And we went from, at one point it was two teachers in there, but we've got one teacher now. Is that, and, and all that?
Sure. So our community connections program has really evolved over the last couple of years in terms of the number of students who are not only out in the community, but also the type of programming we're doing within the, within the building. So last year, we purchased the Paze Lab and I'd have to look back at the slide for what it stands for, but it, it's a model system to work on training skills for job sites in lots of different areas. But it's a model system to work on training skills for job sites in lots of different areas. Everything from construction to office work. Because it's not just about going to a job site. It's about learning the skills that you need to be successful there. So we spent last year working on implementing that. This summer was my first supervision of a construction project in which we remodeled the, one of the rooms at the Millbank Building where our Community Connections program is housed and created a life skills classroom that includes a washer and dryer, refrigerator, stove, microwave. So that, I call it the Manhattan apartment because it really, by the time we are purchasing a bed and a clothes rack and a table, you know, it's about the size of a little Manhattan apartment, but where we can really work on living skills for students in the classroom. The number of students has decreased over the years. So when I came, we were in the mid to high twenties. We have 15 students now, so the number of students. And that is pretty consistent. And when we even look at projections for next year, we only have one student at the high school right now projected to come up. And because of the population of student, we can actually track it back. Like I can, I can go all the way down to like middle school to kind of see what our, what our number, what our numbers are coming. So we really have focused on, on that work component. This year, we're really trying to move and focus on implementing more rec and leisure type of activities and reaching out to the organizations and activities within Greenwich that it's not just about work. It's about what you do on your off work times, trying to create balance in life, just like we try in our own. You know, so we started utilizing the Y last year. How can we, you know, continue that? What are some other activities, hobbies that we can expose students to? We also work with Ableless in partnership. And they run a healthy, a health, a health course for adults. And so we've been working with them. And like last year, we, we would send the whole group of students. This year, we're breaking it up into two groups so that we can access the camp, the UConn Stanford campus more. So we're trying to look at, at quality of access, not just the access itself.
Right, so, and I know we're doing, so I don't want to belabor this now because I know we're doing a whole, a full report this year, a full review of that and Windrose. It'd be interesting to see if, when we think about this report, if the, the number of this, we're down to 15 here, how that relates to out of district placements and whatnot? Does any correlation there? I, I, there's no, no secret here. I remain highly skeptical of, of the model. They, and I think it's important, when we look at this review to have a frank conversation about it, I worry about the lack of inclusive nature of this building being, of these students being in a building off campus. I know it's not my experience in Westchester, it's certainly not my experience in the city. And I know there's been a lot of places around the country that moved in the other way. So I do think it's something when we do this review that we think about the inclusive nature of it, how, how they can participate in, in high school activities, what the nature is of that shed behind, the, the record shed behind the building is. I just, I think we all have a lot of concerns about it, so I'm glad we're doing that review this year. And it's something I worry about. I see Ms. Costin.
Okay, Ms. Costin, you're up then.
I will be mindful of the hour. My question, and it is also about Community Connections because I don't want to take, you know, I, I don't know, I believe that Community Connections should have been part of our special education audit. I think it should have really been sort of a more inclusive look at everything we're offering, not just, you know, K to 12, just like pre-K wasn't part of the audit. But my question is, how many kids are actually participating in jobs? And how many job sites, you know, are accepting our students? I mean, I obviously am concerned about the staffing ratio to the number of kids that are there. So I just sort of want to get a quantifiable number at how we're succeeding in placing these students in opportunities that will enrich them.
So, I'm turning. So on an average day, we have, of our 15 students, 10 students that are going out to job sites. And in addition, you know, some of our students are at a point where they do go independently. We have some students that, last year, toward the end of last year, that would go from home to the job site and from the job site back home. You know, our goal is the independence. And part of that is looking at, we have the students for four to five years. So they have less, less job time starting as an 18-year-old where now we have students through the, their, the school year of their 22nd birthday, because there's been a change in the law for that, that they are much more independent because we're looking at several year difference between experiences.
I would probably not take up any more of our meeting time, but maybe email you a few questions.
Absolutely, thank you.
Karen, maybe you can wrap us up.
Yeah, I just had a couple of follow ups. So one, I don't understand the slide on summary of implementation. If you could expand on this and not tonight, but send us more detailed information. For example, it says learning environment, specialized services. It says six fully implemented, five consistently implemented and two partially implemented. I'd like to know what the six, five and two are as it relates all the way down, you know, to where it refers to numbers of what's been implemented and what's not. I'd like to understand that. Also, I'd like to understand how many, you know, we've been looking at providing teachers with more background in probably Orton, Gillingham and Wilson for reading components. And I'd like to understand in the district and by school, how many teachers are trained in Orton, Gillingham and Wilson for those purposes? I think a breakdown to understand where we have those teachers and who is qualified to, to do that would be very helpful. In addition, I'd like to understand, one of the other things that I'd like to follow up on is you're, we look at children's growth, right? And we have different things, the various testing. And I know that with respect to IEPs and, and kids on a year of, they, we're looking to make sure that they achieve their year of, year over year growth expectations. I think it would be helpful to have some data to see how we're doing because we're, we've been implementing all of these plans for the, and, and expanding up on this in our special ed program. I'd like to know how we're comparing and how our children within the special ed that have an IEP in the special ed program, how they are, where they are at in meeting their year over year growth requirements? Because that's one thing we don't have a breakdown of. And that would be a true test to figure out how, what, how, whether or not we're succeeding, right? Are these changes that we're making and all of this time and effort, is it making a difference? And where do we not see it? And maybe we need to adjust. I think that breakdown of information would be critical for this.
Thank you for asking one of my questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Rich. Much appreciated. And now let's go to, and you talked about how having a reader on a textbook. Let's see if we can put it into a faster mode for maybe the summary of Western Medical School. Dr. Jones?
So I think the description actually on the sheet, I mean, that's all you have, actually takes care of it. But just for the public, we're working on two issues right now. One is the attorney for the town of Greenwich and the bakery are working on mutually agreeable language for the easement. The easement runs right along the side of the bakery. And right now, Public Works uses that easement to get to the transfer station. We need to use that same easement in order to get on and off of Western property. We've had a good working relationship. The attorneys just have to get the language agreeable to both parties. The second item is that the risk manager is actually working with a contractor on an insurance component to increase the pollution insurance after she looked at the policy. So there, I think there's a meeting actually tomorrow on that. So that kind of sums it up, but we are excited to be moving forward and we're ready to, to get started.
Questions? Karen, Westside, Best Side Karen?
Exactly, Westside, Best Side. So I know we had initially discussed, when we heard about this, we, we were talking about having shovel and ground this summer, which we are clearly, it's not summer anymore. So when do we expect to have shovel and ground? Which also would lead me to say, obviously, there's no guarantee on timelines for things, but an idea of how long we think it will take because we had initially thought it would only be a few months. Seems like that may be spread out now, especially because of the late start.
Well, and I, and I think too, I mean, we, it's much more involved as far as like the tree warden, you know, and, and what we're doing in landscaping, you know, on the site, I think than, than we anticipated initially. I think on top of that, again, it's just getting these kind of legal pieces, the paperwork correct. It's a big project. And, you know, keep in mind, it's a $20 million project, so that doesn't mean it's fast. And once we get all the soil out, it'll depend on, you know, when we start and weather. You know, I was, I was reading my weather person who, a lot of the superintendents that scribe to, and this is supposed to be, what are those, like nor'easter winters? So that's what they were saying today. So that can impact a project like this because you, you know, you lose days along the way. So, I mean, yeah, it's going to, it definitely. And I think we just need to wait until we get the schedule, what they're anticipating it might look like. And then we just have to be flexible and know that they're going to go as quickly as they can.
Okay, and we'll work out that arrangement with the bimbo bakery and we'll be good to go. Okay, shall we move on? Lays, are you sleeping?
Oh, I'm here, I'm here, I'm ready to go.
Go ahead, shoot, tell us what you got.
Okay, so first item is fees. And just some background, usually I think we vote on fees tonight. But as we discussed, just a draft before you, you'll see a lot of changes happening. My team and I are still working through kind of upgrading this and making some needed updates instead of, you know, just changing the labor rates. A few major things to note, underlying, the last time, kind of the underlying data was, for the fees was kind of put together was 2018 by Lori. And she kind of built this model behind the fee sheet where it's kind of based on square footage, utility rate plus labor plus admin fee. And so I've been going through and updating that with the new utility rates, looking at some surrounding areas. Also, so you'll see that actually some of the rates at the middle school are going down. I'm just correcting for the fact that the, like the custodial rates match some of the elementary school rates, like on the head custodial fees. So just correcting things to make sure they match the labor contract. Really, the, the, the main increases are for like most of them, there'd be about 4%. For now, at the middle school, you'll see like actually only about a 1% because we're correcting the labor rates. And then some of the key areas like the PAC closer to like a 10%. And we're really just correcting for that underlying utility plus labor. The assumption here is a three-hour event with an hour of custodial services for cleanup and breakdown. And we have the extra custodial rates, like the per hour rate over in the side. So I'm looking for feedback, looking also for community feedback. We're also going to be doing some more math and getting this a little bit more accurate for the next meeting. It's better not to rush the vote, I think. You'll see that we made it clear, there was a, I'll thank Karen Foster too, who provided a lot of input on making this a little bit more clear for people that rent our facilities. We, we're adding some common fee confusion area categories like the, the PAC rehearsal. And also for people that store their stuff in the PAC when they're renting it and take it offline for a few days, but it's not a full event. We added the stadium, we were updating the student center with the new furniture. For the stadium, remember, we're just talking about the team rooms and the bathroom. The actual field is a field user fee from Parks and Recreation. You get a field permit for all of ours. That includes the porta potties, but this is specifically to like use the stadium, team rooms and bathrooms there. So I'll take some questions. I know it's late, you can also ask, you know, I'm really looking for feedback on this too as we're, we're kind of working on it piece by piece. COSCOB, just anticipating Karen, your question, which was very helpful too. COSCOB, it's based on the size of the gym, basically, and some of the other spaces. That's why it's in the middle school category instead of what the other smaller elementary school sizes. And I'll take, you know, any other questions on that right now and also very open to feedback.
I have a question. It's the feedback and the cost that myself, Dr. Jones and Kathleen had to wear while having to pay for the bathrooms at Cardinal Stadium. Now, I think it's crucially important that we do not lease out or rent out the field itself without including the bathrooms and the cost thereof. Because the people are standing there, looking at the locked bathroom, saying, what did we spend all this tax money for? And they're just real, they don't realize that they've got a cheaper fee on the field and the bathrooms are an extra cost. They don't understand that, so we get grief. So let's make sure we incorporate, or if you give me a reason why we wouldn't incorporate the two, please explain that.
Yeah, I think I'm here, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, but the, the field fee, the user fee is equivalent like across the board. That field user fee set by the Board of Selectmen does not include, it's managed by Parks and Recreation. It doesn't include use of the bathrooms, it includes the free porta potties. So we're trying to put a fee here so that someone can also use the stadium. So if you call to rent the field here at Parks and Rec first, or you call us, we'll be giving you both fees in both options.
I don't think that's what we want to do. I think Field 7 could be rented in that way, but the Cardinal Stadium has to be rented as a package deal. Otherwise, the people that go there look at the locked bathrooms and say, what the heck is this? So it doesn't make us look good as a Board of Education that we spent all that town money building a beautiful stadium with beautiful bathrooms and having them locked up. So they don't understand the difference. So what we have to do is make sure that we charge, when we lease out or rent out Cardinal Stadium, it gets rented out at the cost of the bathrooms as well. So in other words, the stadium, the field, will be more expensive to rent than Field 7. We need to, and we need to put that in place.
Okay, we can, we can, we'll have to talk to the First Selectmen's Office and Parks and Recreation, but I think if the board's open to it, that's something that we can definitely partner on and work when we build it into the field user fee.
First Selectmen got loads of grief on that last year. He will be behind that 100%. Karen, you had a question? I'm sorry, Karen, we'll go to the other Karen first.
Actually, I, I kind of, I disagree that it should be, if you rent the stadium, you have to rent the bathrooms because there are different, I understand that perhaps it's the flag football team that wants to rent the field and they want the bathrooms because they've got a lot of people coming in, in and out. But there are other groups that rent the field. They would like to play, for example, I know that there's a men's league or a soccer league in town. They rent, they want to play at the stadium, but they may not necessarily want or need the bathroom component to it, which would then up their price. And they may not come and rent, otherwise rent the field because then it becomes an added burden to them that they don't want. So they go someplace else so they don't rent a field within the school. So I just, within town. So I just, I think it should be, rather than making it one package, it's an option. You can do both because I don't think we're going to end up renting the field. Let's say the field price is $100, but now we're going to include the bathrooms, but we have to pay for someone to go in and clean the bathrooms. So now the field, the bathrooms are an extra $100, so now it's a package for 200. If someone doesn't want the bathrooms, they shouldn't be forced to pay for the bathrooms if they don't want it. And they could decide, I only want the $100 fee versus the $200 fee. I think we should just give them an option. It's, it's going to be more expensive with the bathrooms because we have to pay for somebody to clean them. So, but give them the package option of which one they want, A or B.
It is a very good point you make there, and we thought through that as well. But the problem is when a spectator or somebody who's not involved with the organization happens to go to Cardinal Stadium that they spent all their tax money on, and they have to go look at a porta potty, say this event takes place on a Sunday, the day after a football game on Saturday, when the porta potty services were not there to empty those porta potties and those spectators watching those people play in the field come by, open the porta potty from yesterday's 4,000 people using them?
Yeah, but what, who are the spectators? I mean, if it's the, if it's the flag football people, their parents, and that's them. I mean, I'm not going to watch the men's soccer game on a Sunday morning because I got better things to do, play in my own game. So I don't need to, I'm, I'm, I could be a spectator, but I'm not going to use the bathrooms there. And in that way, you're also assuming that someone's going to run the track and they've got the And in that way, you're also assuming that someone's going to run the track and they've got the fields going, then they're going to use the bathrooms too, and they get the benefit of that. That's what the porta potties are, it should be, just have an option. A, option A or option B, and B is the combination.
The option infuriates the citizens to the point where they-
Okay, well, they just need to read the fine print and understand what they're buying, that's very simple.
Okay, well, I, there are, we got tons of complaints and tons of people irate about it, well, last time around. Karen?
Actually, Karen made my point, which is one of the things I'd sent to Blaze, which was asking that, you know, for those who rent the stadium, because it isn't controlled by us, that we include that as an option. Because much like Karen, there's some people that come and just want to rent it for whatever the hour or two, and they don't care to have that. And then there are programs in town that rent it and they rent it out on a weekly basis for an entire season. And I'm sure we can work with them to provide a better cost included in their package than per se, somebody who just is a one-off. But it should be an option, I think, that was one of my questions. And then, thank you for answering why Cos Cobb was listed as a middle school. And I think you also answered my other question, which was, you know, in a year or two ago, you said that you guys were looking to do, that we were operating in an annual deficit, which is why last year we changed some of the rates, because they didn't meet the contractual labor rates. I mentioned that the long-term, that you guys were going to conduct an updated fee analysis. So I was just wondering if this schedule is based on that study, and if not, if you guys are in the process of doing it. I think it, you mentioned it might be, but-
Yeah, and it's a, it's a probably a partial way there, and still in progress.
Great, so by next year, hopefully we'll have more detail on that, so thanks.
Definitely.
Sorry, I'm with Joe on this. I have to tell you, because Karen and Karen, I had your views initially, like, why is this not like the cable model, right? Like, I get this, now I want this package and I want that package. I totally agree with that, until I lived through it with Joe. And sometimes, you know, if you're in the actual negotiation, of course, you read the fine print. But when you're in the entire community, and you don't read the fine print, and you show up on a Sunday, and you go to the door and it's closed, we were getting all of that, like, you socked board of bed, right? And we, we take enough of that, that we don't need that. And so in some ways, I'd like to spin it, because that's what I'm doing tonight, the other way, which is, this is our premier facility, and therefore it's more expensive. If, if that's not for you, then please use Field Seven, we totally understand. Frankly, I find these rates pretty reasonable, especially if you're, knowing how much I pay for private sports. And if this times whatever, 45, 50 families-
The facility, not the field.
I recognize that, yeah, but so these, this is a pretty, I mean, this is like my fee, right? So now multiply this by many families, this is a very reasonable. No, I think we should stick with reasonable, because they are taxpayers, right? And so they are entitled to these facilities, and therefore we are just covering the costs, and we shouldn't be making a profit on this. However, as it comes to our premier facility, I do think it's okay for us to just sort of say, this is the package. And, you know, if you want to rent the stadium, it comes with the bathrooms and it's therefore more costly.
What I'll suggest is we move on and put it as a possible voting item at a forward meeting, so therefore we could have debate, once a motion's made about where we go with that, is everybody okay with that? All right, so let's move on to another question about something different than Cardinal Stadium. Yes, of course, it's totally different, totally out.
Blaze, Blaze, level one versus level two, is one is for-profit and one's not-for-profit?
Yeah, level one are non-for-profit and level two is for-profit.
And so basically, the PAC is only available to nonprofits?
Is only available to nonprofit, that's, that was a condition in the zoning permissions.
Okay, and then, do, are these the same prices, like when a PTA, like, do we treat our PTAs the same as other nonprofits, or do they get any kind of preferential pricing under this?
That I'll have to double check, we have a number of MOUs and grandfathered rates for certain of our, like, partnered organizations, specifically like the PTA. And then also, what often happens is that the principals have a number of hours that they have at their school and they, that are free, like, custodial services at their discretion. I think it's 30 per, per principal, and they usually share a portion of those with the PTA events to at their school or other community events that are important to that principal's community.
But so like, for example, if the, if a principal or the PTA wants to use classrooms, they have to pay for the classrooms and for the custodian, like anybody else? I think, I think that's just something that we should evaluate as part of this, as a board too, is like, do our PTAs get any kind of special treatment, or do we want them to?
And it also depends too, I think we could talk about that offline. It depends on like the scale of what they're doing and what the hours are. If it's when the custo, like the custodians, if it's a small-scale event using like a small classroom, the PTA, during, during the hours, the custodians are already there working, they usually work around the PTA. Like, like if they're having a meeting or a small activity, they don't typically pay a rental fee for something like that as a PTA. If they're having like a major event with, you know, 200 kids or something there, then they usually, they usually pay if they're incurring the custodial fee, but we usually charge the PTA the direct minimum labor.
Yeah, I think that'd just be helpful for us all when we're voting on this, to just have that information. Thank you.
Good idea, yeah, I'll include the policy, and maybe we should just map and take a look to what we're doing, make sense.
Seeing no more questions, let's move on, Blaze, you're still up.
Okay, so next item is the financial report. So this meeting is just usually, it's info only, it's the year-end report for fiscal year 2023. Since it's, everyone's been sitting here for a while, I'll, I'll go through pretty, pretty quickly. This is summarizing where we ended in fiscal year 23. And so we had, we, as we talked about a few times, we had fairly strong revenue in a number of areas. Preschool tuition was, was up, thanks to some, thanks to some of the work too, that Dr. H has been doing. Medicaid had a fairly significant increase, coming much closer to budgeted revenue. And it's important to note Medicaid is one of the revenues that we can actually access to help pay related expenses. The special ed excess cost grant also, as a result of a lot of that same type of work of tracking additional expenses and getting things more eligible for excess cost was also fairly significant over budget and also, you know, historic revenues. The summer school revenue is something that we actually have access to draw down and pay related expenses as well. With that, you know, due to some of the programmatic changes that the board's well aware of, that's significantly less than, you know, basically pre-COVID years. In the operating budget, fairly straightforward, we basically ended with about a 0.6 variance on the operating budget. You're all, I think, fairly well aware of the challenges that we faced in 2023. And also where the budgetary relief was, and it was basically that we went for the interim. And also, we had significant savings in transportation, almost $2 million by the time we were done. And that was largely a result of, of the penalties that, that Dr. Carabillo and Elmer had assessed for that, that initial performance in that horrific month, that first, first month of school was about $1 million in fines alone, just in that one month. But that really carried us through to the end, because without the interim and the additional transportation savings, we had actually, you know, overspent due to the other pressures we had discussed on capital. Another, another strong year, I, I'm sure Dan's still listening, him and his team. Really, we executed almost about $11.1 million in capital in fiscal year 23. We had our, you can see our starting and ending balances, which are fairly typical. And we also worked on closing a number of old open capital accounts, and that's in close partnership with the town. We had significant grant funding. We expensed a really incredible team effort in 2023, as many school districts across the state were struggling with the same issue of altered expiration dates suddenly coming up on a number of these grants where we've been getting excess federal funding. And we executed a significant amount of funding, in addition to the normal routine funding in 2023 for grants, especially, you know, Mark's team, Ann's team, my finance team, Stacy's team. We all really worked closely together on, on grants in 23. School Lunch Fund was slight, the, the, the actual fund, so School Lunch Fund is a separate fund from the General Fund. It's its own revolving fund, it's, has a very healthy fund balance, probably the best fund balance since the fund was created, thanks to the federal funding. The actual appropriation, and this was a learning part for a number of us, but the actual revenue exceeded the budgeted revenue. But we're not, we're not allowed to act, we also had with that some increased expense over budget. We're not allowed to, I learned, access any fund balance without going for an additional appropriation from the town, even though the revenue was in excess of the expenses and there's fund balance. So to get that additional fund balance, we learned that this year we'd have to go for an interim. What that meant was we had a little bit of excess expense that was moved from 23 to 24. So we'll go to access the fund balance in fiscal year 24. We've talked at length about, you know, special ed last year, so I won't, I'll just take questions if people have specific questions on the, on the financial report.
Looks like we're good.
Okay. I think I'm still up, so-
Still up.
I'm up here, yeah, I'll keep going. So transfers, we have one transfer that's, or we have some, the first set of transfers are informational only. I won't run through each one, recognizing the hour, I'll just take specific questions, if that's your preference as Chair, Mr. Chair.
That, that sounds good to me, Mr. CFO.
Yep.
I just see this listed as a discussion item and an action item, the same, is it the same, so they're different, thank you. They both had the same, looked like the date.
Yeah, these ones, so these ones are just informational. That's because we're moving within the major object code, so it's like, it was appropriated salary to appropriated salary. So it's really just, it's because of the dollar amounts. The action item, which is the next agenda item, when we're crossing major object codes, so moving something, a major object code is like your 100s, that's your salary, and we're moving to 300 supplies, we're kind of fundamentally changing what that appropriation was, that requires the, the Board of Ed to approve that movement. And so this transfer, the action transfer, is one of those transfers where we're crossing major object codes. We're moving from 300s, I mean, from 200s into the 100s consulting. This is to support-
Hold on, Blaze.
You have to get on the table, that's what I was just gonna say.
Oh, sorry.
Sort of melding into non-action into action.
Yeah, you could ignore my comment.
Question of the non-action.
Yeah, could you just explain the first one, the 230 and change, about like going from salaries, attrition savings, athletics? Just explain that one, I'm just trying to understand it.
Oh, yeah, sure, so-
On the informational one.
Yep, 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 excellent. So what we're doing here is, there's this, in our budget, we have a salary adjustment account. And what we're trying to do this year is use that account to track items that have a budgetary impact. And so this one, I believe, was a contractual GWI that, for the budget, for the 2024 budget, to reinstate that, that was not in 2024. What we're using, that attrition saving salary adjustment account, that's in the 17, and it should be actually 93, human resources budget. But that 230,000, we're, we're putting that into the negative, so that we have that recorded somewhere. And then we're increasing the related lines. And it's anywhere, it says various, because it's anywhere where there was a GOSA GWI increase. So 2%, 2.3%.
Okay, we're good, we're going to move into the action item, how exciting, we're going into action now, Blaze.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to, to jump the gun there.
No, I, I'm gonna make a motion, that motion is to authorize transfers as of September 15th, 2023. Do I have a second there? Christina will second that. Is there any discussion on these, this small amount of transfers?
Yes. So Blaze, I asked you a question earlier this week about this one, regarding the particular transfer. And essentially, if I understand it correctly, we're just under-budgeted in this particular area. And then we're gonna need, and, and so we're gonna need to seek an interim at some point, is that what you're saying? I think, I think it'd be beneficial if you just explained this to the rest of the board.
Sure, yeah, there's two pieces, and there's two pieces to, one of them to make the board aware of anyways, too. So good, very good question. Here, what we have are this, this, the services from Constellation, and they provide OTPT services for SESS. Their contract value is a little over a million this year. We are, we have two issues this year, we're under-budgeted for Constellation, just period. And two, we have additional kids, if I, if I understand this correctly, we have additional students who are eligible for the services this year that are driving the cost. What we would normally, so we, we only have enough funds to cover this, really left in our settlement line. Unrelated to this, this would probably be an expense that the district would absorb. Like, we absorbed nearly $700,000 to $800,000 last year in special ed expenses, in addition to going for the interim. We are planning on going for an interim for special ed, will be coming before the board next month. The out-of-district tuition line is basically fully, fully spent already, and it's only September. And a big, a big reason of that is the age extension. So Dr. H, when she built the budget for the out-of-district tuition, it was based on a certain number of kids that would have phased out when they turned 22. The age was extended, not to the birthdate of 22, but to the school year of 22 and effective for this school year. The cost of that is about $1 million in additional services that weren't budgeted for, due to the age extension. So we're going for, you're absolutely right, we're going for an interim for special ed, because we're under-budgeted. But right now, we have enough funds in the settlement account, not by much actually, but we have enough funds in the settlement account to get this contract funded, because they're providing essential OTPT services. So we're going for an interim, which will come before this board for discussion in October. But we have this essential service for Constellation, and this is the funding mechanism to, to get that contract signed. Karen, if that makes sense?
It does, I appreciate that, that was actually really helpful. I just have one follow-up question in regards to that. So are we experienced, maybe it's in two parts, are, are we having a higher, sorry, OTPT service? Because, one, we have more students that are eligible for it? Or can we spin it in a way to suggest that actually, this might, we, we're incurring this cost, although it could ultimately be deemed as a savings, because we're, we're doing the services ourselves as opposed to sending them out? Because we're doing more from a special ed standpoint?
It's a fair question, I'm not sure that I would be able to specifically answer that based on the program. Dr. Jones, I don't know if Dr. H is still there, but I, I don't know that I could answer the question about the specific program.
Yeah, I mean, she's not here, and I think we would want to get the actual data. We do know we're up over 200 students, we're right around that 14%. So we, we have grown tremendously, and this will be part of the whole kind of budget discussion as well. But again, we'll, we'll be bringing the interim, we'll try to bring a little bit more behind what, what's happening with some of these numbers.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to see if we might see more come, more special ed costs come in, in our operational budget, as opposed to, for services that we're actually providing, as opposed to this higher settlement amounts, or the amounts that we're sending, spending on sending kids to different schools, because now we are able to provide these services. And if there's a cost benefit that we're able to achieve by actually paying this money, as opposed to saying, well, if we sent them out to a different district, we'd be paying, you know, 25% more on that. That's what I'm asking.
That's a good question, and I think we can bring you some more data on that. I do know that specifically along those lines, that's basically one of the reasons that our excess costs keep reimbursed. reimbursement was so strong last year and it keeps, it's projected to be even higher this year. Because we're moving students to more eligible services and also Dr. H is specifically categorizing things systematically in a way that is causing our excess cost reimbursement to go up, so we'll get some more data on that, I think, if that's okay with you.
No, I expected you to know that now.
Okay. So then we have to vote on it, don't we? All in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, Cody, are you? Yep, he's up, yes, he's here.
Yeah, it's only 4:00 AM here.
Perfect, that's unanimous, that passes. And we have the, the next action and superintendent's goals, do we have somebody who wants to put this on the floor? Karen, go ahead.
I'll happily put it on the floor, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept our superintendent's goals for the year 20, school year 23, 24. Approved, sorry. As presented, but well. I don't have it in front of me, I know, I didn't have it in front of me, that was what I was trying to say. I would like to make a motion that we approve the 2023, 2024 superintendent goals as presented. Is there a second?
We have a second, Laura, you're seconding it, do we have discussion?
Have we not beaten this to death?
Well, I would say perhaps we beat it to death in our last meeting that, of the Strategic Plan Committee. And we had, I think, as or lively, whichever one we would choose. It was always friendly, it was just spirited. Yeah, I mean, I think overall, the, the, it's outlined as, as such, and I don't know if there's any further point in debating it. I, I think there's potentially some overlap between, you know, goal two and some of the priorities. But I suppose overlap is better or redundancy is better than gaps, if one would argue it that way. But for the record, I would point that priority number one is also goal number two. And, and I do think and I do worry that the priorities of the district keep, are fairly extensive. And I'm concerned that, you know, we don't, with, it's always great that we're working on so many things, but I wonder if we were to limit the number of things that were prioritized, we'd have a better chance of getting and completing them as opposed to touching on so many, touching on pieces of so many as opposed to finalizing fewer, but that's just a general observation.
So I, may I call the question, or Michael, do you want to, were you going to call the question?
I, I, I will, I will call the question after a brief comment, the, the only thing that we-
Bring us home, Michael, bring us-
Bring us home, no, I assure you, I assure you, the, the only thing, yes, the, we talked about that, I think the committee is going to continue to try to hone in on, in, in the how of the strategic plan. You can make the argument that many of the priorities fit the how. I think there was some concern by at least Karen and I, they, around, when he makes 11 priorities, how much that is clear out, out in the public. They, instead, we're looking at six goals and superintendent goals, we like that.
And you're going to-
I will call the question.
Yes, all in favor, please raise your hand. I believe we have, and where's Cody, Cody's in favor, seven against, abstention, one abstention. Okay, 7-0-1, that motion passes. Agenda planning, who wants to take control of the agenda planning? I'm fading it, you take control of the agenda planning.
Sure thing, sure, any, any, does anybody have any comments, actually, I had one, Tony, which I had emailed to you. We don't have anything in the agenda plan for the 24, 25 calendar, which we haven't approved. Yeah, we've been, yeah, I think parents would like to know, so if there's a way, could we put that on in October?
Yeah, I, I wanted to get to the start of the school year, because if you remember, we amended the calendar for this current year to add the extra professional day, and so I need to make that adjustment, it worked really well, so I need to make that adjustment, I'll try to get it back on.
Well, we never actually voted on it, so it's not a back on. Okay.
Wait, we've already, you, you already saw it, you didn't vote on it, you saw it the first time?
But then we never, we got busy with, I think it was Central, to be honest, and then we never brought it back for the second read before we went to summer.
Oh, so you're saying we had a first read, sorry, I'm not remembering, back in whatever, June?
Maybe even May, I don't remember, May or June.
Any other items for the agenda plan? Ms. Austin?
I would say after we receive MI, because that's where professionals are directing their attention, we will be bringing a design to the board.
I think we can add that, once we know the date.
Sure.
And the same for Old Greenwich potentially, so I think those will be flexible on. Any others? Hearing none, that matter, that agenda item is complete. Would you, would Joe, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I wouldn't take your motion away from you, do you have a motion?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Should we make reference to the Alliance Report? That we just, a recognition that we got it, thank you Julie.
Yes.
Whose son is getting married this weekend, because she usually stays till the end of a, of a meeting.
Big congratulations, if she's online.
I highly doubt she's online, her son is getting married on Saturday.
Okay, Laura.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it, all in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, all right, thank you, everybody, way to hang in there, Cody, good job.